I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to take this opportunity to congratulate our two new members to the Board of Selectmen, Sue Moran and Sam Patterson. We're looking forward to a very productive and busy year this year, and with that I'll move on to the reorganization of the Board of Selectmen, and I would like to nominate Mary Pat Flynn as the Chair of the Board.
Second.
Do we have any second?
Second.
Do we have any other nominations? Hearing none, I'll close the nominations and we'll take a roll call vote.
Moffett, aye.
Moran, aye.
Actually, you'll name the person you're...
Excuse me. Flynn, aye.
Flynn, aye.
Flynn, aye.
Flynn?
Flynn. Why not?
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
It's all yours.
Let's... We say, let's make it unanimous, right? Well, thank you all very much. I can tell you, it's... We all know how much work is involved, but we also know how important it is, and I too am really thrilled to have our new selectman here. I think we have a great opportunity to let the town know that they made good choices and that the Board is going to work very well together. I'm just convinced of that, and I'm really looking forward to this year. So, thank you for your vote. And I would now like... We'll accept nominations for Vice Chair.
I move that we... I nominate Doug Jones as Vice Chairman.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Are there any other nominations?
I'll nominate Rebecca Moffett.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Then I'll call for the vote by roll call. Start at this end.
Jones?
Yes. For Jones, okay.
Jones.
Moffett. Moffett.
Jones. So, congratulations, Doug, and I know we'll work very well together and looking forward to a very positive year. So, I don't think we have any proclamations.
Should we touch on liaison assignments?
Yes. I guess the first thing we want to take up is the liaison assignments for the Board. When I was looking at the... When I was looking at this under Chair Committees, and I brought this up before, but the Library Trustees, the Planning Board, the School Committee, and the Housing Authority are all elected boards, or they're elected, have elected members. And it's never been really our intent to actually get that much involved in the work of elected boards because they're there, they're elected, they actually are accountable to the citizens who vote for them. It doesn't mean that they couldn't contact us perhaps in requests, maybe that they'd like to have a selectman meet with them, but it didn't seem to me, and it's up to you, I know this is... You're a new board now, so you get to make this decision, as to whether or not you want to be considered a liaison to elected boards. So, it's... So, I'd ask for some discussion on that. Anybody care to make any comments? Do you want to be a liaison to an elected board? If you do, that's fine. I just bring it up that normally elected boards function on their own, they're accountable to the voters.
I think it depends a little on whether we redefine exactly what liaisons do, and I'm really seeing the liaison as really more the primary contact person to the Board of Selectmen, and for those elected officials, committees, it makes sense for it to be the Chair of the Board who they would contact if they had a concern, and that was the only reason why I put them there.
Okay.
I don't necessarily... I think we may want to discuss as a group exactly what the liaisons are going to do and relook at that policy.
Anybody else?
I think it's a good idea because I think that the boards are all very busy, we're trying to get more people to act, and I think if there is a set liaison, it's a good structure for communication, and I think that's very important. So, I'd be more in favor of continuing or of keeping the liaison.
Okay. Are you... This is the first time that you, as a newborn, have probably looked at this. We didn't put it on tonight necessarily for a vote, but we could. If you are... Would you rather just take the list and decide which ones you would like to be liaisoned to and submit them by email, and then we can vote on them at the next meeting? Or are you prepared to decide which ones you'd like to... Which committees you'd like to work with tonight?
I'm prepared to make a suggestion, and if people like it, we can proceed if they want to think about it more. The Chair Committees, I was thinking, would be under the Chair. Environmental... Rebecca has been our member of the Cape Cod Water Protection Collaborative, and so I think that would be a natural fit for her. I know that with the EDIC and the Resources Committee, I think is a natural fit, and I would suggest that Sue would be a great fit for that, and then Sam and I can discuss whether Human Services or Buildings Committee. I'd be leaning towards Buildings Committee, but if you would be being there, I'd be happy to have Human Services be my...
Well, I was leaning toward Buildings as well.
Okay.
So, the two, that would probably be my preference with my technical background, probably one I'd feel most comfortable with.
Okay. I'd be happy to be Human Services if, as a group, we are comfortable with that.
I'm fine with the Environmental, but the one I really would like to be on is Design Review and zoning board, and those are both under the Buildings.
No, then maybe we should... We can come back to this.
I'm happy with Resources.
Yeah, I think we better.
I'm happy with Resources.
Yeah, I think we ought to just put this all together. You get back to me with which ones you want, and then we'll do this next week. Yeah. Okay. We... Don't we have a proclamation? Yeah, we do have a proclamation here, and we are going to be celebrating this week the 50th anniversary of the North Falmouth Elementary School. This is really a big thing, and so Doug, maybe you'd want to read the proclamation, if you were.
Certainly. Whereas the town of Falmouth bought a parcel of land in 1961 that would serve as the new home of the North Falmouth Elementary School. Whereas the school opened during the 1964-1965 school year with 293 students, whereas the school from that time on has been dedicated to the students and the greater North Falmouth community, they have given them a top-notch education that focuses on a rigorous academic program and also promotes the social and emotional growth of its students. Whereas today, the school celebrates 50 years of educating children and bringing their school motto, "Work hard, be nice, have fun," to life each day. Now, therefore, we, Mary Pat Flynn, Doug Jones, Sam Patterson, Sue Moran, and Rebecca Moffett, as selectmen of the town of Falmouth, to hereby proclaim Thursday, June 5, 2014, as North Falmouth Elementary School Day. I so move.
Is there a second?
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None opposed, and the motion is unanimous.
Heather, you have an announcement?
I do, just a very brief announcement. Last week, the Golf Advisory Committee met and have set a date for their annual public forum. As you know, that public forum has been before the Board of Selectmen the last several years, towards the end of the season, in October, November. This year, they're advancing it to June 17 at 6:00 p.m. at Falmouth Country Club, and the purpose is to hear from the community about the community's experience with the course over the last 10 years, our goals for the property for the next 10 years, and any thoughts they may have about capital improvements and needs for the operation. I'm going to hand down just an information sheet. Many of you may not have a lot of familiarity. It talks about the initial land acquisition, the financing plan, and the goals that had been in place back in 2003, and then, of course, it goes to the starting point for this discussion. The Golf Advisory Committee will then, after holding its public forum, convene, recommend some ongoing goals for the golf course, and will present those to the Board of Selectmen, and they're looking at possibly their last meeting in June for that. So, all are welcome to have an interest in golfing in Falmouth.
That's... Yeah, go ahead, Sue.
Is this going to be publicized other than here?
Oh, yes. Yeah, it's a public notice. It'll be posted at the golf course, and we'll talk about...
Enterprise?
Yes.
Great.
That's really good because there... The contract with Billy Casper is... Comes to a conclusion, a 10-year contract, and it's up for renewal fairly soon. So, this is a really good opportunity for people in the community who either... Who do play golf and use the club, or who would like to play golf and don't know all about it, to learn more about it, and I think that's a good opportunity to give the Golf Advisory Committee the information they need to determine how they move forward, and the selectmen as well, because we actually approved the contract with the... For the Golf Advisory... I mean, for the management of the golf course. So, that's great. Any other comments on that? No?
Madam Chair, could I make one other brief announcement? I just wanted to advise the Board and members of the public that might be watching that, as many are aware, we had a holiday week in the past week, and as a result of the holiday week, we have a refuse pickup one day late, and unfortunately Allied Waste Disposal did not... Was not able to complete their full Saturday pickup this past Saturday, which represented some significant areas in both North and West Falmouth, and I do want to apologize to residents that have been affected by that. Allied has worked diligently today to pick up as many of those missed routes in North and West Falmouth as possible. They are working even as we speak and as we meet here this evening, they are working into the evening. They'll also be starting an hour earlier. We gave them a one-time allowance to do so in the spirit of catching up and getting us to where we need to be. The one piece of bad news is that for the regular Monday pickup routes, some of those same folks will not get picked up today as Allied moved all their resources to pick up the routes and the homes missed on Saturday, which were the normal Friday pickup in West and North Falmouth. But they are bringing in additional manpower tomorrow morning, two additional trucks, and they advise us that they fully anticipate completing the normal Tuesday pickup routes as well as those which were not completed by the end of their workday today. And again, they are picking up as we speak, so they are going into the evening. So, those folks who are listening who still have not been picked up but should have been, Allied has not yet completed for this evening. So, again, we apologize for the inconvenience and the fact that this was not at all anticipated, and we are working with Allied to ensure that that does not reoccur. So, our apologies to those affected, and thank you for your continued patience as this gets brought to closure tomorrow. Thank you.
And I just wanted to mention the passing of Rich Minor. I know many of you probably know him. He and his wife Bobby, who has a ministry here in Falmouth, have been here for quite a while, and Rich was a fantastic volunteer. I know he worked very, very hard and spent a lot of hours with the Falmouth Service Center and many other volunteer efforts in town did he make, and his death was very sudden and it was totally unexpected, and he will be very, very much missed by many, many people. And I want us all to remember him and know what a great asset and what a wonderful person he was and how much he helped this community in many, many ways. So, the next item on our agenda is public comment, and is there anyone who wishes to speak on any matter that is not on the agenda? Yes, George.
George Hampson, Precinct 5. I need your help. I'm Chairman of the Coastal Pond Management Committee, and the dilemma is, right now, we have four people on our committee. We need five. At the end of this month, we are able to fill in the fifth position. What I'm also requesting is that we have a nine-member slot, which I don't see why we have such a large number. It's good for playing baseball, but maybe not a good way to run a committee, a small committee relatively. So, right now, we have four members. We had five, and we have a serious illness in one of our members, so we're down to four. That means when we function, we can't vote on any issue until the end of this month if we select somebody. The thing that's good about this committee is the fact that dovetails with the Coastal Nutrient Committee that we formed, and we're going to be spending a lot of money for this. So, it's an important committee, and I just hope that at the end of the month, we'll have a meeting so that we can solidify this problem with having nine members when I'd love to have seven. I'm sure the committee would vote for that, if we had enough members to vote. Okay? That's all.
All right, thank you very much, George.
Okay, and I'm going to... I'll give you all a copy of this. I hope I didn't exceed my time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Yes, Mr. Fenner.
I'd just like to take this time to congratulate Susan and Sam for their victory, winning the seat on the Board of Selectmen, and as well you, Madam Chairman, for your chairmanship. And I'd also like to ask if perhaps you could consider as part of your policy to put the selectmen's packet on the website so people in town could feel that the government was open, and it would foster a greater participation among the public, I would think. If you could just consider that, I would appreciate it very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fenner. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on a public comment? Okay, see, none. We'll move on to the minutes of the meeting of May 19, the public session. Actually, we're only three of us here who can vote on the minutes, and...
I will move approval of the May 19 open session minutes.
Rebecca?
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? None opposed? The motion...
Abstain.
And two abstentions. Right, okay. So, three in favor, two abstentions. And next is the minutes of the executive session of May 19.
We have three different pages of it, and I don't think any of them can be released at this time.
No.
So, I will move approval of the executive session on Items 1, 2, and 3, and those cannot release.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Second? Any discussion? Obviously, no discussion. So, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Abstain.
Three in favor and two abstentions, the motion carries. All right. Now, on the summary of actions, before we get started on this, I'm going to request right off the bat that we hold Items 4, 5, and 6.
And I believe one has been withdrawn, is that the case?
One is the Special Agricultural Liquor License, Coastal Vineyards, South Dartmouth. Oh, the applicant will be in attendance that would like to speak on this application. Is he here? Yes, please. And you are David Nielsen?
I am David Nielsen.
Welcome, David Nielsen.
Thank you. We've been to the Board several years with our permits for our agricultural farm permit, and it's kind of got to the point where it's routine. I had... We've had some medical issues in our family, and it's distracted me a little bit, and I misunderstood or I wrote the wrong number down that I thought the application was going to be submitted last week for some reason. So, anyway, I assumed that the permission was granted and I guess jumped the gun. I apologize. I didn't purposely do it, but it was done. So, I just wanted to at least explain what I did. I did it wrong. I'm just apologizing. And if there's any questions or comments, I would be... Love to entertain.
I have no questions. I thank you for bringing this up before the Board and informing us about it. I was not aware that that had happened.
Yeah.
And I know something... Sometimes things do get caught up in the bureaucracy of things, and I really appreciate your coming tonight.
Again, it's all my fault.
Yes.
I understand that, and it has nothing to do with anybody else but me. So, I just wanted to at least come to you and explain why I did what I did, and so...
Okay.
And what's the next step after this approval? Does it then go to the ABCC before...
Yeah, I mean, the town would send it to the ABCC, and I think it's seven days.
So, you won't be pouring at the farmer's market until you get this back?
Correct.
Right, okay. So, a motion?
I move approval.
Second. Any discussion on the motion? Any questions for the applicant? No? Then I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? It's unanimous, none opposed.
Thank you very much.
And thank you very much.
I appreciate your...
Yeah. And the next request is for a special one-day liquor license for the Falmouth Fireworks Committee, which will be at the Falmouth Heights Ball Field, and this is... What they are attempting to do is to use the ball field there, fence it in, close it out to others to honor certain people who have worked for the fireworks committee, have worked hard to make it all happen, and they want to have a celebration prior to the fireworks. I think the time is from 3:00 to 8:30, which is just before the fireworks start. This is a new request on their part. We've never had this request for them to do this. It's been done before. I mean, it's not new or unusual. We have... The lieutenant in the police department has reviewed it, and they just made... Want it to be clear that only those in the tent may consume alcohol, that there is a certified bartender that is serving the beverages, that the fireworks committee provides its own security for the tent, and that they set up an inner fence and an outer fence, which is customary with events like this, several feet away so that alcoholic beverages cannot be handed outside of the tent area. And those are precautions that anyone who serves, like at Marine Park, when they have alcoholic beverages, that's just the procedure they follow. So, it's... Yes.
Is there anyone here for the fireworks?
I don't see anyone here.
No, I was looking to see. Okay. My issue would be to make sure that all of these directions are fulfilled because that would be the greatest part of it.
Right.
And especially the checking of IDs. I know if it's a more or less a private party and they would know who's there, but that checking of IDs is important, and it's a certified bartender.
Yeah, I think we would have to... We would have to ensure that these conditions are met by the fireworks committee.
I think that's quite important.
Okay. Are you...
Just a question. Would Lieutenant Doyle not be responsible for that since he's the one that's actually providing this?
No, the police aren't really responsible for it. The people who are having the event are responsible for it. The police would be contacted if there were any issues, but I think someone from the town should check the area and make sure that all these standards are being met, and we could ask maybe one of the chief if he could have a police officer check that to make sure that the fences are erected properly and that there is a certified bartender there. And the applicant on this is... If you can find it. Well, it's just a... It's... Oh, it's Dutch Drolet. So, we all know Judge Drolet, and he's pretty good about things like that. So, we just want to make sure, Julian, from our office here, that those conditions are met and that we have someone inspect the premises before the event.
And one more question?
Yes.
Just who covers the insurance?
They cover their own insurance. They have to provide their own insurance.
And show that it would... That this would be included in the insurance?
Yes.
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
I move approval of the one-day liquor license for the Falmouth Fireworks Committee for July 4. Second.
Any discussion on the motion? No? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? And the third item is a request for the use of Chappakook Beach for a wedding on Sunday, August 10, 2014. The Dan Hoffrich, Superintendent of the Beaches, has suggested that the number of cars be limited to 10 because it is... It is an evening that is definitely in the height of the summer, early August, and that's one of those beaches where people go at night to watch the sunset, so there's quite a demand for parking at Chappakook Beach. So, I think if the cars are limited to 10, he's okay with that, and so it's up to us if we want to approve that wedding at that time on that... On that day with those restrictions. Is there a motion?
Just a discussion.
Question?
Yeah. The application is not limited to 10. I don't believe it says 10 to 15, so I would just make that change to 10 pursuant to Mr. Hoffrich's requirement, as you mentioned.
Right. That our vote will say that the vehicles are limited to 10.
I think the other thing I noticed about it, I probably would not agree with this in the summertime, but I think the fact that it starts at 5:00 p.m. and they have a limited number of cars, and then the reception is away from this area. So, I think in that respect, they simply want to have the ceremony at the beach, and they're watching their transportation, and then they're all moving to another place.
Yep.
So, I would be in agreement with it. Otherwise, a wedding in August on the beach is kind of difficult.
Okay. So, do we have a motion?
I move approval.
Sir?
As restricted.
As with the 10 vehicle restriction?
As restricted to 10 cars.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? None opposed? Votes unanimous. Now, we have... We're going to take 4 and 5 together, and then 6, we're going to separate out because that's a grant that Dr. Gladfelter has proposed. So, Eric, do you want to get up and speak to Items 4 and 5? Let me say what they are. Well, it's a little bit different. So, why don't you just talk about what you want to do under Items 4 and 5? It gets complicated.
Yes, thank you very much, Madam Chairman, and congratulations to you and Mr. Jones on returning to your prior posts and to the new selectmen. We're happy to see you here, and I want to thank this Board and the last Board for your enthusiastic support of Question 1, which is, as you know, was passed by the voters by almost 600 votes. It's a huge commitment by this town, and I think all of us are humbled by the support and committed to making it work for the town. Item 4 here is sort of a good example of why we might consider some change in the process where this Board and the Finance Committee have to take a look at every application of funding that the town wants to put forth. When it got to your agenda here, it was what it appears to be on Item 4 here, but it's changed dramatically, and let me tell you what we're now asking you to support. The Water Quality Committee and the Buss's Bay Coalition are a team on this application. It's a state grant opportunity that we think fits what we'd like to do in West Falmouth Harbor. Let me tell you what we'd like to do in West Falmouth Harbor. As you know, that harbor has been impacted unduly by the treatment plant, and as time goes by, that's going to be reduced. When that treatment plant stops putting in heavy-duty nitrogen and starts putting in light-duty nitrogen, that harbor is going to come very close to being in compliance with the TMDLs. And the purpose of what we're trying to do here is to put it... Give it a push to put it over the top, to let that be the first water body, the first estuary in town that meets the TMDLs. And the way we're thinking of doing this is to offer a grant program to 20 residences or businesses on the harbor, the waterfront people, many of whom have very old septic systems, probably close to groundwater, if not in groundwater, and very little of them ever changed because the properties don't change hands very often. So, to give those folks an incentive to upgrade their system, we're proposing a request to the state for a grant of $250,000. $200,000 would... $200,000 would be 10, $10,000 grants for 20 homes. The other $50,000 would be monitoring of the systems that are put in to see how well they work. The systems that people could put in include, they could be eco-toilets, or they could be innovative alternative systems. Either one is designed to bring down the nitrogen significantly from what currently gets into the harbor. So, the original request is now completely different since the timeframe has moved, and the town would now be the applicant, and we would expect the coalition and the town together to contribute $35,000 each in in-kind contribution, as opposed to putting up Article 17 money. That much, the state grant allows for in-kind contributions, and it favors applications that have more than 25% local contribution. So, to meet that criteria, we've agreed with the coalition to offer $70,000 in in-kind contributions for this grant. So, what we would like to get from the board tonight is just authorization to go forward with this. The town would be the applicant as an equal partner with the coalition, and the project would be in West Falmouth Harbor for 20 months, installing or urging or inciting or providing an incentive, as it were, to the people on the waterfront to upgrade their plan, upgrade their systems in such a way that the harbor will benefit.
So, what, 70?
The town's contribution would be 35.
Oh, 35, in-kind.
Exactly.
And what in-kind work would be done?
The committee's time, Cia's time, Jerry's time, anybody's time who is needed to make the project work.
So, that time then would actually be recorded so that it becomes a part of the record, in a sense, that the town actually provided that in-kind contribution?
Exactly.
Okay.
What would the roles of these individuals actually be?
The homeowners?
No, this in-kind contribution from the part of the town, what would their job descriptions be?
Well, depending on which kind of alternative or eco-toilet people choose to have in, there's a lot of backing and forcing that goes on before you actually get something in the ground, as we've all discovered with the eco-toilet experiment. You have to talk to the homeowners, you have to talk to the permitting authorities, you have to talk to the grant-making authorities, you have to talk to the financing people, you have to sign contracts. Nothing is easy, and this project isn't either.
Do you have any inclination from the department heads about their manpower or their budget and how they would work this in the in-kind, or is it too early for that yet?
It's too early. This is a pre-application, so far. If we actually get to the point of being told that we're likely to get the grant, the state will want more details, and we'll want more details, and we'll work that out with the town manager's office to make sure the departments aren't unduly burdened.
Sounds like a good idea.
Volunteer time counts as well, and we'll have plenty of that, I think, from West Falmouth.
So, is this DEP kind of trying to figure out how they can provide funding to communities in some way? I mean, this is, I know that there was that 319 grant that we missed the opportunity on, because it came up and the timeline was short, and our process takes a long time by the time you go through selectmen and the finance committee, so we lost the opportunity. So, now this one came along, not so, not too long after the original one.
You're absolutely right. There was an earlier grant round called this 319 round, and because of the town's process, the time went by and we couldn't apply for it. Fortunately, this new opportunity came along shortly afterwards, which was pretty much aimed at the same target, which is nitrogen reduction in coastal estuaries. So, we're still in the ballgame. Like the conservation commission, I think, is going to be in the same ballgame on item six.
Well, let me ask you about four, talks about something that no longer applies, actually, which was to us to vote to utilize the funds, but we're not doing that now because it's in-kind. But the second part deals with the application of the two grants from the collaborative and the Cape Cod Economic Development Council that are in support of the two existing town demonstration projects. Does that still fit in with this plan?
That's a separate story.
That's a separate story.
Which is item five, which Cia will be happy to lay out to you.
Okay, so we're really now only talking about four?
Exactly.
Okay, so that's four. So, does that require a vote if we're going to support an in-kind? Probably it does.
I would ask the board if you would.
If we would support the in-kind contribution to this grant project? Remember, it's only a pre-application. Does that mean it will come back to us again when the application is complete, or not necessarily?
At your request.
Because there's really no funds or no further commitment of town funds on this.
Yes, I don't think the process would require it to come back, but certainly, we'd love the manager to know the process and.
My preference, Madam Chair, if it's agreeable, is once the paperwork, if we're fortunate enough to have a formal application, once the paperwork would arrive, I would bring it to the board's attention and ask for your concurrence at that point.
At that point, but we can vote tonight to support?
Yes, to allow pre-application to be extended.
Okay. So, is there a motion?
Okay.
You still have another question? Sure.
What percentage of the whole properties in that area are you hoping to actually get to participate?
There's about 44 waterfront houses on that harbor, and if we can get 20 of them, that's almost half. That's pretty good.
And as I recall, the UMass Dartmouth did a hydrological study 12, 15 years ago. It indicated that one of the major contributors to nitrogen in West Falmouth Harbor were these properties right along the coast.
You're absolutely right. I'm glad you remember that. The $10,000 per household grant that we're applying for would not cover the whole cost of doing this. The cost is probably going to be in the $20,000, $25,000 range, depending on the house and the system they choose. So, the homeowner will be putting up a good deal of money as well. This is not a gift to the waterfront property owners. It's an incentive to get them to upgrade their system in a way that helps the harbor.
So, the other thing I understand now that there is an innovative alternative septic system that can be purchased and utilized that actually reduces more nitrogen than the septic systems that we're used to now, that we've been using all along. Is this something new?
There are many ideas out there that would do that. George Hoyfelder runs the test center for the whole state of Massachusetts, where all these people with their ideas get to go up and see if they really work. So, George is our expert on this, and he will let us know which ones work, which ones work well, and which ones we want to recommend to these homeowners, based on the research he's doing up there.
Okay. Good.
I would move approval of the support for the application and proceed. I'll second.
Okay. Any further discussion? No? Good. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Unanimous.
Thank you very much.
All right, now five. Are you gonna, oh, Cia's gonna talk about five, okay. This is the two grants from the collaborative and the Economic Development Council?
Yes, hi, good evening. Congratulations, congratulations. It's great to see you all. There are two alternative demonstration programs that the Water Quality Management Committee has been working on, as the board is well aware. One is the shellfish demonstration program, and the Cape Cod Collaborative is offering the town of Falmouth $50,000, which will pay for this year's monitoring, which is the intensive water quality monitoring that we're doing, and monitoring for the actual shellfish. And so, it's $50,000, and they're offering us that money to defray what we would be spending otherwise out of Article 17. So, it's leveraging Article 17 to do the project, but getting other money to fund the actual monitoring plan. And the second one is, as you know, we've been looking at permeable reactive barriers, and it has come, sort of the next step is to really understand the hydrogeology in some of our peninsulas. And so, the second grant is $25,000 to do some additional, to do some wells, and then some analysis so that we can understand the depth to groundwater and some other parameters that will help that decision-making process and that process of looking for PRB, or permeable reactive barrier sites, take the next step. So, one's 50, the other's 25. It's a total of $75,000 that the town is being offered.
And the 50 is stuff that we already, is money that we already thought we were going to have to pay to monitor.
Yes, it is.
And so, we're not going to have to pay it this year, but we may very well have to pay it next year to continue to monitor, but we already knew that. It's not like this is a new thing.
This is not a new thing.
That we're having to pay for. It's just this year, we don't have to pay for.
That's good.
That's always good.
Yes, Becky Moffett is our representative on the collaborative, and which they do a really important job, and one of them is helping out with funding, so I'm glad that we could do that. And the Cape Cod Economic Development Council, so that's very good.
I would move acceptance of the two grants.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? None opposed, unanimous, the motion carries. That's great, thank you. George, yes? Do you want to talk about the grant?
Yes, I am. I have a positive question. If the monitoring goes beyond the first year, wouldn't it be a good source for in-kind monitoring from the Coalition for Buzzards Bay and other people that have done this for 25 years? Is that a possibility, that that could be included in the grant?
Would you like Eric to answer that question?
Yes, either.
Eric?
Either.
Eric, Cia?
I'm not trying to start a fire. A lot of this information is gathered by the folks you talk about, the volunteers who go out there and collect the data. What we're paying for with this money is SMAST at the University of Massachusetts Dartmouth to do the scientific work with the data so that we can prove to ourselves and to the world and to the DEP exactly what gain is being gained from these shellfish experiments we've been conducting. So, it's the scientific piece, not the volunteer piece, that this money is going to go for.
Okay, thank you. Okay, the next is item six, which is a pre-proposal application to Southern New England Coastal Watershed Restoration Program Nutrient Management Grants, which is the Buzzards Bay National Estuary Program, and we have Dr. Gladfelter here to present us with this information.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So, this grant program, which I guess is the one that Eric was talking about, although it wasn't identified, is called the Southern New England Coastal Watershed Restoration Program. It's funded by the EPA, and it's a joint program with Buzzards Bay and Narragansett Bay, and there'll be about a million dollars available. And the Buzzards Bay project is soliciting pre-proposals, and so, you've just heard their pre-proposal, and so, we're here requesting your permission for us to do a pre-proposal. It's a little bit of a rush because the pre-proposal's due next Monday, and I was in talking to Julian and Heather, and they've been busy since then, and I've been busy since then. I got Julian's email today on the way back from Connecticut, from a trip to Connecticut. But I did give you, you should have a page description.
We do.
And going away for two days allowed me to think a little bit more about the project. And let me just tell you what the project is, and then let me tell you the idea that I had for matching funds. The project is to restore the 17-acre marsh that's sort of encircled by the homes in New Silver Beach. And you're aware of the fact that New Silver Beach relatively recently was sewed. I called Jerry after I wrote this, sent it off to Diane. About 200 homes were sewed, but as you can see from the map that Bob Shea produced for us, there are well over 200 homes in that watershed. And this, you know, over the years, New Silver Beach has extended, homes have extended by filling wetlands. And finally, you got to the point where we got to the 1970s, and it was illegal to fill wetlands, and you sort of had this marsh encircled with all these homes. I went to the engineering department to find out what the connection of the marsh was to the ocean, and the marsh is connected to the ocean by two pipes. One pipe goes out at the bulkhead, which we're going to be repairing, and this is all part of the project, because in addition to restoring these wetlands, we'd have to put a new stormwater system in this area, because that's a big problem with introducing nitrogen and other pollutants to the wetlands. And so, what I would propose to do is to, this would be a first step of a project. This would be engineering and permitting to do stormwater upgrades and to restore the marsh. And what I'm suggesting is in-kind would be administration. I've talked to Peter, and Jen, and Greg and Chuck. So, these three committees, DPW Engineering, Conservation, or three departments, I should say, Engineering, Conservation, and Marine and Environmental Affairs have worked together in a number of restoration projects. And that's it?
And that's it.
And then the next step, of course, if we get the pre-proposal, if we're asked to do the full proposal, we would definitely come back before you with a full budget.
So, are you anticipating that if you were to be pre-approved or have the pre-proposal accepted?
Right.
That where would the dollars come for the project? Would it come from DEP or some other source?
Well, it's not DEP.
It's not DEP.
It's a.
Oh, it's a Buzzards Bay.
National Estuary Project, the Buzzards Bay Project. So, it would come from then.
The funding would come from them for the project?
Right, and the match funding would be, there'd be some administrative funding, there'd be some engineering oversight, which I've talked to Peter about, and then what we're putting into construction. So, actually, it was to answer your question about volunteer time, when you have to have match funds, there's a time limit, and these match funds are anything that is expended after January 1, 2014, January 1, 2014. So, we're going to be doing that project in the harbor this summer, and Jen had hoped that we could tie, because part of that, part of the bulkhead project is that there's stormwater problems there.
Okay, so the matching funds actually come from the town through their in-kind services?
Right.
Right. Now, we've done that before.
You've already.
We did that at Cedar Lake in North Falmouth with the herring run.
Right, but you're not going to have to spend anything that you've not already gotten permission to spend.
Oh, okay. I see.
Isn't that right? The bulkhead work is already on the books, it's being scheduled as we speak, and so, I'll get the figures from Peter, but that would be the matching funds, plus there'd be administrative time that would be in there.
Okay, I see what you're saying. Yes, Cia?
Just a question of Julian or Heather. What I'm hearing is that this is within the scope of the work of the Department of Public Works?
Correct.
Thank you.
Do we need a vote for this?
Yes.
For the preapproval? Okay.
Yes, it's just like the one that Eric gave you.
Just like we just did. One question.
Betsy, do the homeowners get notice of this as your, is that part of the application procedure going forward?
Okay, so what, when Jen and I had thought about this, because we were reminded of this grant by Joe Costa from the Buzzards Bay Project, and so, I started putting things together for Julian and Heather. Actually, we had a different water body in mind, which would have been great. It's something that we've been working on for a number of years, but it doesn't qualify. But most of this land is owned by the town. There's a little piece that's.
Jen, is it owned by, is it owned by 300 committees, or it's conservation restricted?
That I would have to double-check, and there are one or two private property.
Yeah, but what would hap, so we're not actually, we wouldn't actually be doing any work under this grant. This is to do the engineering for it, but if there are any private properties involved, we would have to get their permission. Yeah, we would have to do that.
Okay. So, we're just saying, okay, go forward with the pre-proposal. If you get the proposal, you'll come back?
Correct. Correct.
And then we'll have all the real details in final form.
Right. And so the timeframe is June 9 is when it's due. In theory, in June 20, they'll say which pre-proposals are selected. And then we have a month to get the proposal in.
Okay.
All right.
I'll move approval. Second?
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None opposed, unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Very much. Okay, next we have a wetland hearing. And I will read the notice of the public hearing. The Falmouth Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing under Section 240-77 Wetland Regulations of the zoning bylaws of the Town of Falmouth on June 2, 2014, at 7:00 PM in the Selectmen's Meeting Room, Falmouth Town Hall, on the application of John F. Austin III and Evelyn H. Austin for permission to relocate and construct a new dock into the waters of West Falmouth Harbor off Lot 1B, Number 16, Lummis Lane, West Falmouth, Mass. Area affected is West Falmouth Harbor. Interested parties may review the file on this hearing at the Selectmen's office per order of this Selectmen. And I think, Jeff Reither, you are here representing Mr. Austin?
Yes, hi, I'm, excuse me, Jeff Reither with DSS Design, representing Jay Austin. Also with us today is Bob Amet, in the front row. I do have drawings, if you have any.
No, I only have one set, so we'd appreciate some more sets if you would. Thank you. Thank you. I have one.
Okay, hi. This property is at Number 16, Lummis Lane. It's on West Falmouth Harbor. Just to the north is the Nashuauna Bridge. Mashapackwick Creek is to the north as well. We were in front of the Conservation Commission a few weeks ago. We just received our order of conditions, which I hope is in your file. It's an approval. Currently, Jay Austin has the use of this dock, which is just on the north side of the north lot line. And you may wonder why that is. And this lot, 2B, was once the Austin compound. And Mr. Austin used the dock here, which is licensed, as well as Jay using this other smaller float dock there. Mr. Austin has passed away, and this lot was sold. They maintain the rights to use this dock here with an easement. You'll see it's a five-foot-wide dock easement on your plan. And that's basically how Jay has his dock on the neighboring lot. And part of the agreement when they sold the lot was to seek permission to put the dock on the proper lot. So that's what we're here tonight to do. The dock today is a light duty, it's on four-by-four post piles. It's a light-duty dock down to the ramp and float. And we want to relocate that same float and bring it on to Lot 1B, or off 1B, and create a new approach to that float. And that's here in profile view. You'll see that we're utilizing an existing boulder. It's a granite boulder. We're going to place a platform on that and bolt it down to the top of that boulder. We're going to put a little approach to that and come off the platform with a new three-by-20 aluminum ramp down to the existing float. As part of the project, it's to remove the marine railway. Here, it's on a diagonal. This is also licensed. But Jay has no use for this. It's kind of an old relic, and we'd like to get it off the property. So that'll be taken away and replanted in that area up in the upper part of the coastal bank. What else? Winter storage of the flotation is here. This is the floating dock. And what we call the mooring field is shown. It's the shape of the boat here. And that's on, I guess, the south side of the float. And they'll probably ask me about the water depth, so I'm going to talk about that briefly.
Yes.
At the existing dock, there's less than a foot of water under the float. In fact, it's here at the landward edge, it's .3 feet. So when you have the moon tides, it does touch down. So by shifting it over, we're not able to get the three-foot required by conservation, but they are happy enough to give us the approval because we're improving the situation here, also providing a lateral access of five feet at the high-water mark here on the profile, and providing about another half a foot of water depth under the float, and maintaining basically the same distance off the shore. In fact, overall, this dock is a couple of feet, the proposed dock is about two feet shorter than the existing overall. So with that, I guess I'll take any questions.
Well, I do want to say one thing, that under our bylaw and the charter, we don't have any direction in terms of a relocation of a dock. We just have a new dock. So for our purposes, we're going to consider this a new dock. Even though you're taking a dock from another property and moving it here, for this property, it's considered, at least for our purposes, a new dock. I don't think that complicates anything in any way. We just follow the same procedure. We just don't use the term relocation. I mean, it's in there, but it's, I guess my question is, were you anticipating that the license that goes with that dock would go with it as it gets moved to the new property, or to the adjacent property? Because that is a license, that has a license number.
They would probably get a new license. I think that the fee would be covered under the footprint of this dock being eliminated. And we would like to call it a relocation in our license. So maybe either way, you know, I don't know if this complicates things.
Well, we'll just use the relocation and just do it that way. But as far as we are concerned, it is still a new dock at this property.
Right. I mean, it's not like this comes up very often. It's just, it's not like this comes up very often.
No, I don't ever recall it ever coming up.
You know, it's a different situation, no doubt about it, but it's pretty straightforward. It's just sort of shifting this right down onto Jay's lands.
Okay, I think Attorney Amet would like to comment.
Thanks. For your record, I'm Bob Amet, attorney for Mr. Austin. I think that if the existing pier were on the same lot as the proposed pier, then we probably could file an application under the section of the zoning bylaw, which has to do with altering pre-existing non-conforming structures. Because this is a pre-existing non-conforming structure that exists. It was there before a special permit was required from the Board of Selectmen to have a dock. But we have a different lot, and we're building a dock on a new lot. So I think that your analysis makes perfect sense. But let's make it clear, the existing dock, 40 feet away from the proposed dock, is going to be removed, and that area is going to be restored with mitigation plantings, as is the licensed railway. So we are actually three existing structures licensed, two docks on the lot to the north, and the railway here. Now, this is a special permit case, and I believe that the wetlands special permit section is the only special permit role that the Selectmen play under the zoning bylaw. And there's very specific language. The board doesn't consider the host of criteria that are listed in 240, 216 of the zoning bylaw. Instead, the decision according to the wetlands regulations is to be guided by what in the board's judgment is desirable to protect and conserve the shellfish and other aquatic resources of the town. So it's a very fairly limited concern, and it seems somewhat duplicative of issues that the Conservation Commission reviews. But that being said, I want to point out, too, that a shellfish study was performed by Jack Bacaro and submitted to the Conservation Commission. And it specifically finds that no portion of the area proposed for dock construction is significant to shellfish. The number of shellfish found in the area during the survey was significantly under the minimum threshold to be considered a viable shellfish habitat. And the area, we're going from 10 wooden pilings to two pipes, and that's all that will be required for this aluminum structure. So I think those are important things for you to consider. And new dock or replacement dock, I don't think it matters. There are actually a host of benefits that go along with this project. And I think you probably, you've already heard some of them from Jeff. The harbor masters submitted a report that said no impact on navigation or mooring fields. As Jeff said, the dock's actually a little bit shorter away from the edge of marsh. It's a better, simpler structure all around.
Thank you very much. I think that's what we have gleaned from this, is that it's a better situation all the way around. It's better for the homeowner. It's better for the waterway. And does the board have any other questions?
I think just to reiterate a point in the special conditions, that clearly the view from the property to where the dock is, is supposed to allow the plants to grow up, no dwarf plants, no pruning, that any view of the water is not that way. At least that's how I read the conditions. I just want to make sure that, if I'm reading the conditions correctly, maybe that's for the COMCOM, but.
A lot of the conditions, though, here for the plantings have to do with the removal of the railway, the marine railway.
But that's in that same area.
That's in the same area. Becky, you had a question?
Yes. I just, if you would explain to me what a marine railway is.
Sure.
I bet there's five other hands here that could do that.
My name's Jay Austin, and my wife and I own this property here. A marine railway is a rail that goes into the water.
You're going to have to use a microphone, man.
Oh, excuse me. Jay, could you just get behind there and use the microphone, please?
Hold the mic.
Or hold it, yeah, while you're talking.
I'll do that. It's a railway that goes into the water.
Okay.
It has a cradle on it. And when it gets in the water, you put the boat on the cradle, and you pull it up.
Okay.
You see that?
The boat stays there.
I don't understand that.
And it's a pretty sizable structure. And as Jeff had mentioned, it is licensed, and I have no need for it. So I'd rather just take it out and revegetate it. As far as the view of the water, there's no view of the water here anywhere. For anyone that's been in here, it's a jungle.
Right.
And I like it that way for privacy, to be frank with you. And the pier, of course, with the 10 pilings will come out, and that will be revegetated as well, so.
Okay.
One more?
Sure.
How are you addressing that three foot of water from the water down to the base? How, I mean, are you changing that, that you have one foot at this point, and it needs to be three?
Well, there's more water where I want to put the float than where it is. Where the water is, I mean, where this float currently exists, you know, on low tides, moon tide, it's kind of on the mud flat, which I want to get it off of that. It's above my prey grade. That's what he's trying to tell me.
Well, one thing to add, first, there's about an extra four inches of water at low tide. Of course, we can't change the water. The only way you get more water in a situation like this is to go farther out, and there's no interest in doing that. But what's the purpose of the requirement that you have three feet of water at low mean tide? You know, I say requirement, and that is a standard in the Conservation Commission's regulations. It is not a requirement for a special permit from the Selectmen. The purpose of it, of course, is to keep engines in particular from scouring the bottom, and to avoid boats being on the bottom where they could adversely impact shellfish, eelgrass, and the like. And this is a situation where we don't have either of those situations, either shellfish or vegetation. It's a mucky bottom. And so it's better than we have now. It's the best that we can do without a major pier that starts to have different issues. So that's the way the Conservation Commission saw it. And while the Conservation Commission is pretty strict in when it requires the three-foot requirement to be met, and usually does, this is a situation where they felt it wasn't necessary, both because it was a replacement, and they were essentially getting back an equal or greater area affected by a dock for this, and they didn't think it would have adverse impacts.
Well, you answered another question while you were answering that one.
I usually talk too much.
Well, that's a good way to learn. But it was the shellfish and the eelgrass, and you've addressed that. So, thank you.
Okay. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak in favor of this application? Yes. Mr. Hampson?
George Hampson, Precinct 5.
Attorney.
Precinct 5, and had the opportunity to do an onsite of this with the owner. And I want to assure you that this owner, everything he does is just meticulous. That so-called sled that goes down to the water, it's really a bad situation, and it should be removed. And the owner knows that, and he's going to have it done. And I think you'll be proud when this is done. And the Conservation Commission doesn't approve these docks very often. There has to be a good reason. And I think it's all positive. Thank you.
Thank you, George. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor? Is there anyone who is opposed to this license? All right, then it's back to the board.
We do have a recommendation from the harbor master saying this is not, there are no navigational issues and no mooring issues essentially with this dock.
So a motion to close the hearing.
Will we close the hearing?
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. So the hearing is closed, and now the board will take up, oh, the board will vote.
Thank you very much.
So, thank you very much, Jeff. So is there a motion?
I move approval of this request.
Dated, it's dated April 17.
Seventeen.
It would be to approve the dock, the approval of this dock on a plan dated April 17, 2014.
With the conditions, the order of conditions?
Yes. Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Is there any other further, I mean, is there any further discussion? Yes.
Excuse me, Matt, it's received on the 17th.
Oh, the plan?
The actual plan date.
Sorry, the date is April 15, 2014 is the plan date. So you amend your motion to include that date of April 14.
Well, just to change it today.
Okay. If there's no other discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? None opposed. The motion carries. Thank you very much. And let's, why don't you start, you can sign that plan down there if you would.
Is this the official one we have to sign?
Well, wait a minute. Oh, yeah, this is the one. This is the official one. If you can just start signing that. And bring it back. Okay, the, let me find my agenda. The next item is a wetland hearing.
I think we're postponing that.
I know we are. I just want to read it.
Okay.
We have a wetland hearing, which is an application for a proposed beach nourishment to restore a sandy beach at the Tides Motel at 267 Clinton Avenue, Vineyard Sound. And we have a notification here that says that the Conservation Commission did not have the right quorum to vote for this, and so they are confident. have the right quorum to vote for this and so they are confident that they will approve it, but that the official vote will not be held until Wednesday, June 4th. So we will have to continue this. We can't vote on it because the commission hasn't voted on it. I'm sorry you didn't know that. And it isn't really appropriate for us to open the hearing when we don't have a decision.
I understand this one, so...
So we will just reschedule this. If the commission is, if the Conservation Commission is voting on it this Wednesday, perhaps we could continue it until next Monday, June 9.
Monday, June 9.
Is that okay? I'm sorry for your inconvenience. All right, now we're gonna move to committee interviews. And we, these are for, let's see. We have two interviews for regulatory boards. One is the Board of Health and the other is the Zoning Board of Appeals. And I think George Hoyfelder is not, oh, he's here. So George Hoyfelder is up for reappointment. He has been on the Board of Health for a while and so, George, if you want to tell us why you want to do this again.
I don't know. My wife asked me this.
I bet you did.
Let's point him before he gets in.
We perfectly understand.
Can't we just go ahead and prove this before he backs out?
Well, I always want to volunteer my service to the town and the best way I know how is something I do most of my day. So title, most boards of health, about 90% of their work is Title V. Or 50% of my work day-to-day in the regulatory sense of the county health department is with Title V. So I figure that's the best way to serve.
Well, I guess the first thing I would say is how, what, how many years have you been on the Board of Health?
Too many, but at least 15. But there was a hiatus there because of the charter saying that you can't serve more than three successive terms. I got my Mondays off wonderfully for one year, which I took long walks by the seashore and then I was reappointed to the board. So I've been on the Board of Health since it has been separated from the Board of Selectmen. I don't know how many years ago that was, with the exception of the one year that I took off.
Can you go back in your memory and think what was the most contentious thing that you had to deal with?
Smoking.
Smoking, okay.
I don't have to go that far back. That was like, that's like glued in the forehead.
That was the first year I was elected selectman?
Yes, and it was workplace smoking regulation and the restaurants felt that they would lose business. There's a lot of hearings which filled rooms like this with a lot of heat and less light and many of the board members, in fact, we lost a few board members over that, they're just rather contentious hearings and you end up, if you don't like that kind of pressure, you leave.
My next backup question is, do we have a ruling concerning smoking on the beaches?
Not right now, no. Not from the Board of Health.
Has that been addressed about smoking on our beaches?
The Board of Health has not taken that up as a regulation. I don't know whether the Beach Committee has, but the Board of Health does not.
Thank you.
Anybody else have a question for George? Doug?
One quick one. What's the most enjoyable aspect of being on the Board of Health field?
Well, Title V and alternative septic systems is my expertise and I always like trying to find a solution. When somebody comes for variance, we're about providing them a solution that delicately balances the needs of the public, the public health, and that one thing that person wants that compromises that. So it's somewhat like a puzzle. How do you make the two work? How do you not compromise public health and how to allow somebody to enjoy their property reasonably? And I like that part, it's a challenge, it's a puzzle.
Well, thank you very much for being willing to serve again.
So George, what's an innovative alternative septic system?
These are mini treatment systems in your backyard.
Mini treatments?
We've heard all about nitrogen being the primary contaminant that people are worried about and in some instances across the Cape, there'll be areas where sewer-ing is just not feasible economically, nor is it needed in a lot of places. If you only have to remove, say, 50% of nitrogen, then a lot of these systems, which are manufactured units that come into our area to try to sell the units in the area, need to be vetted out. So those systems are mini package or mini little treatment systems in the backyard. And in my professional life as county health officer, we've set up systems to monitor those, to track those and to report to the 14 of the 15 boards of health, the results of those. And as well as starting a test center to actually try these out, rather than having something fail in somebody's backyard, it's easier to fail at our test center because we can just shut the flow off to it. So we are one of the few on the continent, there's only three others on the continent that can serve as we do. We began it from the county health department with the support of all the towns, including Falmouth, and now it supports itself.
So George, just a follow-up. To what degree do these decrease the amount of nitrogen going into?
50% of nitrogen, 77% of the time. And I only know that because I just calculated it today.
I hear you say that all the time. Okay, Sam.
Is there online access to a description of these systems and also the results that you've achieved?
Absolutely. If you check onto our website, M A S S T C, Massachusetts Alternative Septic System Test Center, M A S S T C, if you go to Catholic, you remember that, M A S T C dot org, that will take you to all the research that we've ever done on them. If you want to know what happens in the county, the Barnesville County Health Department, barnesvillecountyhealth.org, you can find out what every system is doing in every town on Cape Cod. It'll generate a nice graph for you. If you're a data hog, you can go in there and actually clip the data and go out there and analyze it for yourself. But we provide complete transparency in that regard because when I was on the Board of Health first started, we had companies coming trying to sell us everything from this is the best thing since sliced bread. Perhaps that's a bad metaphor to use with wastewater. But, and what we set out to do is make it totally transparent how those things work. And you know, if you look at our website, you'll see some of those dogs won't hunt, take them home, and other ones are very good at what they do. We wanted the public to be able to know what those were and through the county health department, we make that acceptable. We use Falmouth's data as well as every other town with the acceptance of sandwich, excuse me.
And George does offer tours?
Yes.
At, by request, at the base.
Central.
Okay. Anybody else have a question for George?
I would move the appointment of George Hoyfelder for the Board of Health to a term ending 6/30/2017.
Second.
Any further discussion? Here we go. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No one opposed, so the vote's unanimous, George.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And next we have Kimberly Bealan, who is a candidate for reappointment to the zoning Board of Appeals. Welcome. Actually, you are going from the alternate to the permanent position.
I hope so.
Yes, that's what this is all about, right?
Yes.
Good. So tell us why you want to re-up so this group.
Hi, so I've been, I was elected actually very recently to fill an associate member position. It was in February, so now that has come to an end and there is a full voting member position up for grabs, I suppose. So I would like to be elected for full. It's been a great experience, a learning experience and I'm just getting started. So after a few months, I think I'm getting a little bit more comfortable learning the ropes a little bit and it's definitely been great. It's helping. I'm an attorney, I do zoning work, but it is a lot different to be on that side and it's awesome to be getting to know, I work off Cape, so it's awesome to get to know the town and the people in the town more as well.
Doug?
In watching some of the zoning board appeals, I've actually been very impressed with how hard the zoning board has worked to pull you in as an alternate and train you to be a full voting member, but also the amount of expertise and knowledge you've brought to the board has been wonderful. What would be your favorite thing you've found to be on the Board of Health? What have you enjoyed about it?
I think, that's kind of a tough question, I enjoy a lot of it. I like to see the different parts of Falmouth and I guess seeing the different proposals from a legal perspective is always interesting because, you know, you have your project and when you're representing somebody, it's the right project and it's perfect and to have people come in and, you know, and you're looking at it from a different vantage point and playing judge almost and, you know, really taking it in and seeing what's going to be the best for the town is different and it's enjoyable because it's different.
Becky?
I've gone to a few of the zoning board of appeals meetings and I've been most impressed with you.
Thank you.
And I believe your explanations when you are agreeing and how you back that up is very clear and I'm quite impressed.
Thank you.
Anybody else have a question?
I would move approval of Kimberly Bealan to the zoning board of appeals, full term, full membership with a term ending, it is a five-year term, so is that?
Yes, they're five-year terms.
June 30th, 2019.
Yeah. Great.
A second?
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous.
Thank you.
That's great, thank you. And thank you for joining our board, we appreciate that. Now, the other reappointments tonight are non-regulatory incumbents and they do not require inquiries, but I think it would be appropriate if I would just read quickly the names of those people.
Can I interrupt for a second?
Sure.
And the reason they don't is there, we do not have other member, people who've applied for these positions.
That's right.
So they're incumbents and these are non-challenged positions.
So Affordable Housing Committee, Alexander Ziss, Agricultural Commission, John Hotchkiss and Stanwood Ingram, the Beach Committee, Charles Lagadice, the Bike Waste Committee, Robert Fitzpatrick, Jonathan Murray, Scott Lindell, the Building Co. Board of Appeals, Michael McGrath, the Cable Advisory Committee, Kevin Lynch and Michael Eider, the Cape Cod Joint Transportation Committee, Peter McConady, Cape Cod Water Protection Collaborative TAC Technical Advisory Committee, that's what that means, Jared Pataomas, Community Preservation Committee, Peter Crowell and Virginia Carmichael, Constable Thomas Dean, Council on Aging, Judy Rebello, Disabilities Commission, Jane Perry and Brenda Thompson, the Energy Committee, Paul Waimer, Robert Beckher, Human Services, Dr. Florence Davidson, Recreation Committee, Patricia Morano and Sandra Cooney, the Solid Waste Advisory Committee, Ruth Brazier, David Dubois, the Town Building Committee, Robert Pellegrini, the Upper Cape Regional Transfer Station Board Alternate, John Elliott, the Veterans Council Committee at Large Members, Randy Colette, Rebecca Silva and Curtis William Fry, Water Equality Management Committee, Eric Turkington, Virginia Valiella and Winthrop Monroe, the waiters, the certified waiters for Cape Cod aggregates, David Peterson Jr., Paul C. LaRusso, Robert Umbrello, Samuel Ace LaRusso Jr., Linda DeVito, Ted Freeman, Ted Bousfield, Tracy Post, Paul DeVito, Michael Thomas, Jennifer Quinn, Darren Allen, certified waiters for the Upper Cape Transfer Station, Owen Tipton, Ernest Santos Jr., Christopher Duggan, certified waiters for the wastewater treatment facility, Giles Pyers, Patricia Neiman, Robert White, Robert McLaughlin, Stephen Parsons and Stephen Deverness.
I would move approval of those appointments.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Votes unanimous. And other annual appointments, these are also incumbents. The Parking Clerk, Patty O'Connell, Assistant Parking Clerk, Tracy Cecil, the Inspector of Animals, Philip Lang, Daniel Donahue, Sarah Brooks and David Carrigan.
I move approval of those appointment, reappointments?
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None opposed, motion unanimous. Okay. Next, we're gonna move on to the bike park proposal and we have here Ryan Ferris, an Eagle Scout. Hello, Ryan, you're welcome.
Tyson.
Rice, I'm sorry.
Tyson.
Tyson.
Ryson.
Ryson. What did I say, Ryan? Ryson. Yes, thank you.
Madam Chair.
Got to get your name right. That's step one.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I'd like to disclose that Ryson Ferris is a member of my scout troop, of which I am the committee chairman. He has participated in many outings, including hiking, backpacking, canoe treks. However, he is not related to me in any way by family or employment affiliation.
So you're fine and there's no money involved, so that's okay too. All right, Ryson, tell us about your proposal.
So my proposal is for a passive recreation park on the parcel of land that the Conservation Commission purchased back in 2001. And originally Stephen Stimson wanted to get a very elaborate plan, which involves two pathways, one to make sure we pull up, maybe on Palmer, or like that.
Excuse me, can you just pull the microphone there and just hold it and there you go. We can hear.
And so I've revised the plan so that it only involves the removal of the invasive species in the, basically like the brush area between the park and the actual, the actual bike path. And my new proposal is to have a path that comes off of the bike path and returns back onto it where, and there would also be an area where there would be bike racks, signs, just like a large, I'm not sure how to describe it. But, so I talked with Betsy Gladfelter and she walked the site with me and she said, originally at the Conservation Commission meeting, that two entrances would be kind of, we wouldn't need two entrances, whereas she actually started to walk the site with me and there already is an entrance down here. She said that there would be no problem making two entrances.
Are they, like, each an entrance and an exit or is one an entrance and one an exit?
One would be an entrance and one would be an exit, just because bike path traffic would flow one way on the same side as the path and would kind of...
So what is, what is the distance between the, on that red line, which would now be an entrance and an exit? What would the distance of that be? Do you have any idea?
Honestly, I don't have an exact number, but I would guess about 300 feet.
And from it, it looks as if, since pink is the bike racks?
Yes.
They're, they're actually located more toward the...
That was the original proposal.
Oh, now you want to move them up?
So they would actually be up here.
Up there, oh, okay. And tell us about what you expect, how people can use this area now?
Um, it's...
And what you're gonna have. I noticed you have benches there.
Yes, they'd be granite slab benches, which would be memorial benches and Ed Gross of the Bike Waste Committee has a list of possible donors for those. Those would be along the, basically the area of land is like a bathtub pretty much because it was Doug's foundation for office buildings. So around the bottom of it, there would be granite slabs along the pathway to service benches.
Becky?
Is there a way that you have for the financing of this? Have you, you have a plan for that?
Yes, looking into donors for materials, but scouts in my troop, as well as adults, are definitely willing to volunteer their time in order to help me out.
Can I ask a question?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, Sam. Yeah, I was looking at the picture.
We have heard some concerns with the butter and some people that are concerned about changing the look of that lot, that parcel there. How close are those benches likely to be to Palmer Avenue approximately?
They would be probably about 50 feet off of the bike path, so they would not be too close to Palmer Ave. And I think that since it's a park that's be used, that would be used for passive recreation that there would be no like kids running around or we'd have to worry about people running into the street.
Sue?
I have a follow-up to that. I think it shows a lot of work and, you know, it's really great to do these projects. I'm wondering if you've met with the chief of police or the traffic safety board across the street from here? If I, if I drove by just to, just to be sure, there's a convenience store at the gas station, there's a bagel shop, it's a very, very busy intersection and I'm wondering what kind of plans or considerations you've made for encouraging picnics, small children... made for encouraging picnics, small children near such a busy intersection with high traffic?
The original proposal did contain a dry-fit stone wall, basically just like rocks piled up as a stone wall along Palmer Ave, but I thought that that would, that wasn't really necessary, but if you guys have any suggestions on how to better improve the plan or fix your concerns, definitely feel free to let me know.
Well, I just wanted to mention what the Conservation Commission approved, I think you probably have that, they, they requested a revised plan, which you have, and they, they would allow two openings onto the path, granite benches to be spaced evenly throughout the pathway and bike racks to be installed near the opening closest to Turbine Drive.
Yeah.
So that would be at the entrance, the bike, the bike racks would be there and how many bikes would that rack hold, do you think?
Um, I didn't have a number, but.
Don't have a number.
I would say about two bike racks would be sufficient.
And how many bikes to a rack?
Six, probably.
Six to a rack? Okay, now, what, is this, is this supposed, do you envision that bike riders will use this as a picnic area or just as an area where they can just come and relax and sit on the bench and, you know, get their energy back up and then get back on their bikes and go, or how do you see people using this area?
I can honestly see it being used as, you know, anything you can think to use it for, it's approved for passive recreation, so basically just people would come there and relax and hang out and have picnics, but there would be no picnic tables, no trashcans, so they would have to remove all garbage that they brought with them, but I, I don't really see it as a, as like a high-activity area.
High activity. Doug, Doug?
I have to admit, I do have a number of concerns, one is, it does seem like a place to stop and with the stores that Mr. Patterson mentioned across the street, I would worry that would increase the number of people stopping, crossing that road at those intersections, which is not a great place to encourage more pedestrian traffic. The second is, it is a very, very heavily trafficked road with trucks and I just can't imagine it being a nice place to sit and listen to all that traffic going by and I do worry, it looks to me like it's actually going to be blocked off enough that the concerns of people coming into town and seeing that, that they still won't be able to see it because of the shrubbery, so I'm not sure if that really is a major concern, but that was another one to, I don't want us heading into the Cape Cod shrubbery that comes over the bridge as they come into Falmouth and we start heading in that direction also, those are my concerns.
So I guess have you, have you looked at any safety issues that you think that might, like Doug just raised, the one where people might go down, park their bike and then go across the street maybe to get like a bagel or something and come back, I don't know, I guess we should really think about public safety at that intersection, have, has anyone from the police department had an opportunity to look at your plan?
No.
I think it would be really helpful.
Okay.
If you had one of the lieutenants take a look at it because I know they'd be very concerned from a public safety point, I mean, if, if the people on bikes just came and put their bikes in a rack and just sat on a bench, that's one thing, or a lot of them bring their water or sodas or snacks with them anyway, but if people happen to come down and think that maybe they go across the street and get some lunch and bring it back, that could be a public safety issue. So I think, I think, I think you're very creative and I would have never thought of that and I know Sam mentioned that there is a neighbor who has some concerns and, because of any, you know, disruption to the, to the area, but I would think that it would be helpful, at least I would like to see you sit down with one of the safety officers at the police department and get their take on it and get some advice from them as to how that could be used safely by bike riders.
Definitely.
Good. Yeah, Becky?
I think, what I'm thinking about is the maintenance and if people probably would not respect it as, as you would and they leave things behind and it continues to build up, I'm just thinking of keeping that look that you want it to have and how that's going to happen.
Originally, my mom actually was like, why don't we have trashcans there so people can picnic and stuff, but I think the, that trashcans would encourage people to eat there and leave more garbage and it would also be a matter for the DPW to come and, you know, take the trash away. I don't, I don't know.
I'm not real sure how to maintain.
No.
All right.
Aren't there any crosswalks at that intersection?
Yes.
Yeah.
All four sides.
Okay, I think that.
Are there, are there any lights that?
There are, the crosswalk stoplights, the.
Not pedestrians though, not pedestrians.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's a pedestrian crossing there for the, for the, yeah.
But not these pedestrian signaling?
No, but no signals, no, maybe we could have the chairman of the Bike Race Committee, Ed Gross, would you like to say something about the project?
Sure.
Sure.
Originally, this project was not, not a bike park, it was Gateway Park and the name bike got attached to it because it's adjacent to the bike way, but it really isn't a park for bikes, it's a park for people and the space is already being, has been used since it was acquired by the town, by people who come down from the hospital and have their lunches there, just sit.
Really?
There are no benches, but there are, there are rocks, if you take a look, you'll see evidence of people spending time there, but keeping it quite clean and it really is a lovely, remarkably quiet spot considering that there is traffic nearby, some of that is owing to the topography, it has a dip in it. Anyway, I think this is a very nice, what Ryson has proposed is a very nice variation on this original design by Steve Stimson. The intersection, is the hospital lights intersection the most, probably the most modern and carefully equipped pedestrian and vehicle intersection in the town of Falmouth, I don't know of another that's anything that's quite as, as comprehensively done to allow pedestrian traffic to go across and reach the shops, the convenience store and the Bagel Bakery and others on the corner. We did not, during the original development of this idea, we did not, I admit, speak to the police about it, the Traffic Advisory Committee might be interested, but as I said, there are crosswalks, there are on-demand buttons, the intersection is automated for passage by emergency vehicles, it shuts down, it's very visible, I don't know what more it could be. And I must say that I'm very, I'm delighted that Ryson came up with this idea as a, as a project because the land as it sits is a little bit inaccessible and with his, with the improvements he proposes, it'll become more accessible, it's our town's land and it'll be used very well, prospect of doing, causing any disruption to anybody is remote, I think is, so someone would imagine to, anyway, anything else I could comment on?
No, that's great, thank you. Annie Saganic?
Hi, I'm Annie Saganic and I'm, first of all, I'm so proud of Ryson because he's such a great young man, every time I see him, he's a new outfit on, last time I saw him, he's trying on his tux for the prom, so this is exciting, this is a whole, it's like Fashion Barbie, but it's Ryson. What, what we haven't talked about is that there's a lot of affordable housing in this stretch on Palmer Ave, across the street from this park are a series of rentals that are privately owned, that are primarily, I think, lower income, I think HAC owns several of the buildings, there are children there and there are parents and other people, so I see that this would be a nice green space for them if it was a little bit more accessible, it is very well-signed and regulated, I see people crossing and walking up to the hospital a lot and I'm always pretty impressed that they're going to walk up that hill, but also my, my folks, my residents who live at 170 Palmer Ave, much further down, often are walking to the hospital and Gosnold for meetings and things like that and I think that this would be a neat place for them to kind of stop and have a little rest before they make the trek up the hill. Personally, I live in West Falmouth and I ride my bike with my kids a lot, not as much as they should, but we do, and I think it would be a neat place to stop because it's a very long ride to Woods Hole from West Falmouth and we have some short legs, not mine, but other people's and they would like the rest, I think it's a neat place, there's no other place in this stretch to stop until you're at the shining, well, where I think of the original bike path connecting, it gets very industrial and urban, you're, you're on either side of the Steamship Authority for some time, then you're behind, there's like an auto body place and little, I mean, it's not very attractive and there's also really nowhere to stop, so I think it's great, I think he's a wonderful young man and I think you're respectfully overthinking it a little bit, I know you won't do that when I'm up at bat and I, I support it.
Well, there is one other place, the Bud Stop, over at, on Highfield Drive.
But that's in bad shape.
It is?
That's on your agenda soon, right? No, I'm only kidding.
Not tonight.
Yes, there, there is one, I don't, but I don't think there's a bench there, there's Bud.
Yeah, it's not meant for.
There's a, like pagoda, sort of a strange thing, yeah.
It's called the Bud Stop.
Bud Stop.
Yeah. Yes, Nancy Hayward.
Nancy Hayward, West Falmouth, precinct five and the mother of two Eagle Scouts, so I certainly appreciate Eagle Scout projects. I have had various people speak to me about this green spot at the entrance of town, why do we have to try to improve something which is there? I myself will speak to the traffic at that intersection, I come through that intersection, because I live in West Falmouth, I come through that intersection every time I come to town, that is a difficult intersection, it does indeed have controlled lights and they are used by people, I will say that I think lots of people who use the lights find them very confusing to use, it's very hard to get the traffic and the ability to walk on the lights and I, I guess, I don't know why I should notice foreign visitors, but I have seen people whom I would say were out-of-towners using these lights and I have felt that they have had difficulties with them. I guess, I think that I had had some concerns about breaking through the wall, it's a little unclear to me, it is an old wall, we do not have any walls in this town designated as historic structures, however, this was the 1872 rail, whether we consume this as an old wall or not, I don't know. I have had the neighbors speak to their concerns of having the density of their vegetation and increased human presence budding their residents, it is a historic district. There are various projects in town currently that are making impacts on residential areas and I think that people living in what has been a stable condition to them should be given some consideration, I understand we can't stop progress, but is this an improvement over less active use of the property? Thank you.
Is there anyone else who'd like to comment on this project? Yes. Right. Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Thank you, my name is Bob Fitzpatrick and I'm the president of the Friends of the Falmouth Bike Way and I'd like to answer one question I think came up, there's 337.6 feet of bike way next to this and you're over 100 feet from, over 126 feet from Palmer Avenue, there are people using the bike path and the people who are using Palmer Avenue in a hurry to do something else, they're not going to use this, however, it was recommended that Bluestone be used for the path, the town has a lot of experience with that because near Bud Stop, we've had that for two years, three years now, I guess, and it's worked out beautifully, very safe, lets water go through and so forth. So, the Friends of the Falmouth Bike Way are quite in favor of this because it fits in nicely with the experience of cycling and I've been cycling for about 72 years, so that's when I started, that's when I was a little kid. So I, I looked into the open space rules and it seems to fit very nicely for the town's policy, which is specific, specified, and you can look it up on the internet, on the town page, excuse me, excuse me, first of all, all open space owned by the town shall allow for public access, very clear policy, that's what we're asking, that's, that's what makes it very favorable. Management needs, it says the town parks and open spaces have to be accessible and safe for a multitude of uses, such as children, elderly, disabled, bicyclists, runners, walkers, organized teams and our pets among many others, so that's number two. Number three, and this is a policy two in goal three of the open space and recreation law as it's now written and, and has been accepted by town meeting, accessibility will be improved to the greatest extent possible at all recreation and open space areas to better serve those with physical and visual auditory and other disabilities, in other words, you, you make, make it possible for someone in a wheelchair to enter the, enter the little pathway, you don't keep rocks and old walls to prevent people from using the property. So if you have any questions, pardon my voice tonight, I got a little pollen problem today because I rode about 30 miles.
Anybody have any questions, Bob? No, well, you raised some very important points, this is town-owned land.
It's within the policy of the town, yes.
And public access is, is absolutely one of the major criteria that we have for, for public spaces and I can't, I can't say that I disagree with your plan, I think, and I agree that, that people who use the bike path need places to stop and rest because there aren't that many, I, where I am, there's an A bench and I see people congregating around that bench a lot and they're only going from North Falmouth to West Falmouth, so I think it's helpful.
The bike path, as it was constructed recently, six and a half miles, the last part of it.
Yeah.
Has a bench every 2,600 feet.
2,600.
That's, that's, that's the length between benches.
Great, thank you, Bob.
Okay, thank you.
Doug?
I would encourage Ryson to, I think it's something we'd like to consider and the two places I'd love some more information, and one is to talk to the, the police department or the traffic management group, the second is to see whether CPC would be able to fund it under the new recreation funding aspect of them and they would, if they could, there's another group who could give you some excellent advice as to.
Yes.
How to get some money and how to create a proposal that then would have the funding behind it, which would make it even easier for us to approve it.
Sue? I just want to add, maybe Mr. Goems also with respect to parks.
The parks, yeah.
Would be another good consultation to have.
Yeah, that's good, yes, Sam.
Clarification, Ryson, were you planning to raise all the money for the benches and the work to be done?
The benches, Ed Gross, the Bike Race Committee, I believe you have a folder of possible donors, will be great.
Oh, yes, Ed.
Excuse me, I need to introduce myself before, I'm Ed Gross, I'm chairman of the Bike Race Committee for another few weeks. There used to be a memorial bench program. There used to be a memorial bench program in town, and the evidence of it can be seen down around the ponds in Quissette. Unfortunately, in fact, I think it was Heather who made the comment that it looks like a bench showroom, because everybody wanted a different style or design of bench or material. So we have all different kinds. And unfortunately, the way our budgets are structured under the charter, we can't retain a fund to maintain these benches. And we ran into a problem a few years after the program began, where two benches were, one was damaged and one was sinking. Fortunately, the original donors were available and were willing to pay to fix them. But if they hadn't been, it would have been DPW's thing, and it would have been kind of an ugly blot on the bike way, which is, it's such an important attraction we have to maintain to the utmost. So in any event, we gave up on the memorial bench program some years ago because everyone wanted the same spot, and everybody wanted their own design. And I do have a file of people who over the years have requested new memorial benches, and some of whom I assume will be interested in other kinds of memorials. And that was the original attraction of this project to the Bikeways Committee, was to find a way to give people opportunity to provide memorials. And there is a market, and pay for pavers and benches and other outdoor furniture, as it's called, I love the term. I'll be happy to share that when the time comes, so that we can see if there are people who would like to contribute in that way.
Thank you. Thank you very much. No, I think, no, yes, Mrs. Northern. And Mr. Northern? No, just, just Mrs. today, huh?
I'm Maureen Northern. I live on Lakeview Avenue, precinct two. I'd like to speak about preservation in Falmouth. Past boards of selectmen with vision and foresight have preserved this space at the entrance to our historic village. Times change as boards do, but the necessity to preserve open space grows. There is a hole in a bike rack in this historic wall near the Seafood Sam Restaurant, along with picnic tables, close enough for cyclists to get off their bikes and rest. This is a historic wall when the trains came back, when the trains came to Falmouth. Urban people visit our town because we still have open, natural, undeveloped space. Passive recreation can occur in alternative sites in town. The town's own parking lot down this path, away with a kiosk in place, could be an alternative for this Eagle Scouts project. I was a member of the original group that brought the Shine and See Bike Way to town in 1976, and I've biked all my life. I'm 80 years of age. I'm not against cyclists or the project, but I think we have other areas in town that this kind of project could be put into, right down on the bike path. Historically, I think you need to look at preserving what little left is in this part of town, downtown Falmouth, in open space. We just hardtopped the whole Steamship Authority parking lot. And this is the entry to our town. It's the first thing people see when they come into town. And I think you need to delay your decision on this till we get more information, maybe a traffic study. I go to the hospital three times a week, and I can tell you how many cyclists never stop to get off their bikes to go across Tarral Drive. It's a wonder there hasn't been an accident there. I watched the other day, and I only saw one get off their bike. Everyone just zooms right by there. The police need to get involved with cyclists and making them observe the rules of the road, quite frankly, no matter where we are in town. I hope you will delay your decision until we get more information about this, and maybe there is an alternative for someplace else on the bike path. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yes, Mr. Northern?
Well, just a few words on some of the things that have been said. I think you approached rather cavalierly this idea of approaching the stone wall. I happen to like stone walls. Stone walls were built by our forbears, hard labor, and it seems to me that they can be a source of history. And they were built in day with a luxury of time and money didn't permit bicycle paths. I think that actually, when you look at the traffic, I'm 89, I go through there four times a week, and it's horrendous. There's no question, there are traffic lights there and pedestrian lights. But when you look at the backup, when the big ferry comes down Woods Hole Road, it discards its feathers, automobiles, it's stagnant, all the way from bus lights right to the hospital lights. Try to get across, it's very hazardous. I also walk, so I walk that bike path, and I think I paced it, it's about 100 yards beyond the second entrance, there is an access from the bike path to a lovely picnic area behind Seafood Sam's and Amphith. Very nice, very usable, within 100 yards. I think it's a crime to really destroy this lovely, natural, historic area. There are alternatives, speaking against Boy Scouts, it's like being against motherhood, I guess, but the fact is, they have put a lot of work in, and it really should be admired for it. But there are alternative spots that conserve the public, the whole public, above and beyond the bicyclists. And I think they should take just a little more time and find one of these spots. Certainly that Bud Place further on down the line. There are ample opportunities for good use, but we do need open space. Coming in to Falmouth, it's just remarkable to see that park undisturbed. And so I hope you would use your prerogative and suggest to the applicants that a better location might be suited for their efforts. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Well, we'll go, one quick one.
One quick question. Is that, is the-
The question's through the chair, if you would.
Oh, sorry. Okay. Mary Pat. Is the public, is the picnic area that Mr. and Mrs. Northern referenced, is it publicly owned? I thought it was private, so I never stopped there because I was afraid.
Well, we'll have to look into that.
Do we know?
Yep. You made a Seafood Sam's. Yes, sir. You're next.
Good evening, board. I'm Hillary Nolan. I'm the homeowner of the abutting property there to the corner. And, you know, as you are aware, in 2001, they wanted to put a medical office on the corner. The town wasn't really in favor of it. It's a really busy corner. We, as the abudders, really had the most, you know, fight to do anything about it. We did, and conservation landed became. Now, I guess I was naive or really not in the know, but I thought that that meant that it would be open space always. So the last couple of years, Dr. Gross has come to visit us twice about the project that he proposed with the Gateway Park. We looked at it, and we felt that it wasn't a good idea, and we told him that. And now, you know, Ryson's a good kid and everything, but now this plan is almost exactly like what Dr. Gross has proposed about the whole plan. I feel that we don't need a park there. We need open space, and it's a nice little natural, we fought hard to have it, open space, and it's a nice area to come into when you come into town. The bike path already has, this fellow from the Bikeways Committee says that there's a bench every, what did he say, 2,600 feet or something. There is the Bud Stop there. There's the little kiosk up in, I bike the path all the time. There's a little one up by St. Borisette there, where they talk about the Native Americans and St. Borisette and everything. So the parcel should stay as it is in the entrance to Falmouth, charming town, and not look like a city park, I believe. The bike path is nice, but it does have its issues. We have lived at that location at our home for 30 years and never been broken into until recently, and my back workshop has been broken into twice at night. Now, we all know that the bike path is open day and night, and mostly used, in my observation, people at night are mostly walking. Now, some of those people, again, you can imagine, are up, they're up to no good. There is already a large rock that is close to where that, next to my property, that's a huge rock, and at night, kids gather there at that rock and hang out there at night already. So the park that, oh, the other thing is, Dr. Gross, and also this nice lady here, mentioned a lot of the people, not bikers, which is my contention also, they even said it, they were inviting not bikers, not the people using the bike path, but people coming off the street. And I watch people, people do walk a lot. People go to the hospital, they walk to the hospital, they walk all around that area. I contend that a lot of the people that are going to use this are going to come from the street, not from the bike path. And they're going to hang out there, they're going to loiter there, they're going to be smoking there, and they're going to be able to walk over there at night. So that's my concerns. And as Ryson points out at the end of his letter, to quote him, "It could provide a start for further improvements by any other interested party." That gets me, too. So, you know, for safety issues, it is open at night, so someone's going to decide that we need lights there at some point. Someone's going to decide we need to trim all the bushes out front because you can't see enough in there that it might be not a safety thing. And in the first breeze of wind, those really nice locusts that we tried hard to keep there and not get cut down, as Ryson pointed out, they have shallow root systems. So the first breeze of wind, one of those locusts comes over, it's going to be that somebody wants to take all of the locusts down. So to end up, to be truthful, if I lived in the other end of town, I still think it would not be a good idea to do this project there. I think we need the open space. I think it's beautiful coming into town without seeing a little park that looks like Moon City.
Thank you, Mr. Nolan, for your comments.
Thank you.
Mr. Northern, do you have one more comment to make?
Yeah, I have a question, actually. There is a northbound railway that crosses that. Now, I don't know how that would impact on a park or anything of that sort. Hamilton, last Wednesday, I saw a Hamilton tree surgeons out there, and in fact, they did a nice job, and most compliment on the buffer between the gentleman's property and the park, and took out a couple of trees. They really didn't have to. One had already fallen down, they cut it in two. But it got me to thinking, with the power right of way, how does that impact it?
Well, we'll have to look into that, too.
Thank you.
Did you have-
One other comment, but quickly, to use a catchphrase, I think that could become an unattractive nuisance.
Thank you. Mrs. Nor, uh, Mrs. Nolan, yes, sorry.
Hi, my name's Paulette Nolan, and I'm the abutter to the property next door. When that property was bought in 2000, it was bought with funds of the town and the land bank, and this was to prevent further congestion and to preserve more green space at the entrance to Falmouth. We basically were tree huggers over there because a lot of the people wanted to cut down so many trees, and we were over there trying to keep it as natural as we could. As my husband said, I don't think we need to have another park. If you really want to, you know, they're talking about there's going to be entrance to Goodwill Park if you wanted to get off the bike path and go over there as well. But my main thing is, though, when we went to the COMCOM meeting a couple of weeks ago, there really wasn't any plan, and I came as late as Friday at 4:00, and there was not any plan either. So I haven't been able to see really any revised plans, and I think we are doing a cavalier attitude because it is an Eagle Scout project. You know, there was talk, you know, about granite benches and bike racks and one entrance or two cutting in, and an entrance off of Palmer Avenue coming into the park as well. And now there's talks about, you know, handicapping able to get in and out, and I'm concerned also about what about the water runoff if they're going to make a path? I mean, it is a basin there, and there are the locust trees, which are shallow, and I can just see them being torn down, too, because it's going to be a problem because the granite benches are there. So my thing is, yes, I'm not for it, but I really still don't know what is happening next door, as far as where the granite benches are going to be, where the entrances are going to be, is there going to be all sorts of other things? And I really think that we should try to just keep it as pleasing as possible the way it is. There's going to be, who's going to cut around the granite benches? And there's going to be graffiti. As it is now, my husband and I are over there a lot cleaning up trash. I don't really think people, like this lady said, people use that area over there because I'm out, I'm home 24/7, basically, and there's never anybody using that area for picnicking or anything like that. And I don't think it would be wise to have it, that people are just going to be coming off the street using it over there, too, because even in front, when we were doing the granite benches, I believe, in the park on Main Street, they took away those because people were ruining, ruining the benches with the chest set and everything and all the graffiti. So who's going to be cleaning up all of that? As it is now, you said that Bud's Place needs some work to be done on it, and that's, that's not even that old. So I just think that we don't need to have more money spent on it for the town to keep up the maintenance. And so I really hope that you would see our viewpoints as well and not approve this project. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Okay. Okay. Ryson, you're next.
Just to answer some of your concerns-
Need to use the microphone, Ryson.
Yeah, oh, yeah, thanks.
Just to answer some of your concerns, the path coming off of Palmer Ave, as is seen in the revised plan, it's not there anymore to discourage people from coming right off the street into Parkway. The idea of having two entrances from the bike path to the bike path is to encourage use of people who are beyond the bike path. I think that the reason people don't use it, as you say, is just because it's not accessible. And I think that if we made it an accessible area, that it would be used by a lot of people.
All right. I think, all right, last one. Okay, last comment.
I have heard that Bud Place has got problems. I don't know what the problems are because they never mention it. Could I give you a picture of this wall in the, one of the spots that they-
If you would just leave it with this, yes, yes, thank you. That would be helpful.
It's not a great picture, but it's accurate in the sense that it's photographed.
And this is, this is where, located, where?
That's about 75 feet from the Nolan's-
From the Nolan's property? Going north-south?
If you were at the Nolan's property, walking north-
Or east-west?
It would be, yeah, it would be west.
East-west.
It would be about 75 feet away, and that was one of the proposed entrances, and it's, you can see what it is.
Right, okay. All right. Thank you so much, Ryson. I think we've heard a lot tonight, we've had-
I just wanted to say one thing about-
Please, you have to go to the microphone.
Probably no more than four or five years ago, or a couple of years ago, that entrance that you see there with the, there is still a stone wall there. You know, stone walls, I mean, that stone wall was not necessarily built when the trains came. It could be 18th century, that stone wall. There's a lot of stone into the ground. So that stone wall still has, yeah, it's like down here, you don't see hardly anything, but there's a lot of stone there. Now, that little path, which is now like a big path, for some mystery reason, in the last year, when they came to manicure the area the town does, they started to cut that little area, and it was, it was only- And it was, there was only a little spot like this coming through there. I mean, the wall was run down, but there was only a little path like this. So, I went over there a couple of times, and I said, "Who told you to cut this?" I said, "Don't cut the area through here." "Oh, okay." But they started to cut the, that's why it's more of an opening there. And of course, now they just trimmed for the overhead power lines. There's also overhead power lines right there. So, it's been trimmed right now, so it looks like a big opening there.
Okay, thank you. Does any, what I'm going to suggest is, we've had a lot of issues raised, like water runoff, public safety, maybe a more detailed plan, issues of maintenance, you know, how that would be taken care of, people coming in, and food and so forth. So, I think, I think we do want to have our public safety, the police department take a review, and maybe you might want to be part of that review. And I think we'll just turn the rest of it over to the town manager and ask him to have some of the town departments who have some responsibility for some of these activities take a look at the plan, and then maybe make some suggestions, and then we'll bring you back again when we have all the information back together. How's that?
Fantastic.
But, great job, really. It was very good thinking, very creative thinking on your part, and we want to give you every opportunity to have us take a look at it and make the right decision. Okay? Thanks very much, Ryson. Thanks for coming. Yes, okay, so, is that everybody okay with that? Then we'll move on to the conservation restriction at Metoxit Road, from Metoxit Road to the Moonicus River property. Mr. Ahmet, are you? Okay, thanks.
The Scout oath includes twelve, or the Scout law, rather, includes twelve attributes, and brave and courteous probably apply to what's we've just seen. Two that perhaps should be added for this situation is patience and persuasiveness. I think there's a lot of lessons that a young man is learning. I'm here as the counsel for Dr. Martin and Mrs. Ellen Pildes, who own property, two vacant lots and a house on Metoxit Road and the Moonicus River. And for, I think, well over a year, they've been working on processing a conservation restriction that would have the result of avoiding two buildable lots being built upon. One of those lots already has a Conservation Commission order of conditions for construction. The total area of the conservation restriction is 2.15 acres. And the proposed conservation restriction has been reviewed and preliminarily approved, pending your approval, by the state's Division of Conservation Services and by the Falmouth Conservation Commission. The Conservation Commission has issued to the Selectmen its municipal certification. It says that this conservation restriction will assure that the premises will be retained in perpetuity substantially in natural scenic and open condition and prevent any use that would materially impair or interfere with conservation values. It notes that Wacoit Bay is suffering from nutrient loading, and the conservation restriction will avoid the development of houses. Now, this area is in a particularly sensitive area, environmental area. Both the Massachusetts Natural Heritage Endangered Species Program core habitat area, it's in a critical natural landscaped area, partially within the Wacoit Bay area of critical environmental concern, and the Cape Cod Commission's Significant Natural Resource Area. The land is almost entirely within the statewide land conservation plan. So, both from the river and from Metoxit Road, the conservation restriction will provide scenic enjoyment. One of the interesting things about this conservation restriction is that it was the first application made under the state's conservation land tax credit program, where a fairly limited amount of money has been set aside by the state to encourage conservation restrictions. It's a very competitive program. And I think because of the particular location of this property, as I've described, it qualified and the tax credit, which is only $50,000, but it's $50,000, has been awarded as a tax credit to the Pildes's, subject to completing the processing of the conservation restriction. It will be held by the 300 Committee, the conservation restriction will, so their board of directors has determined that this is a good idea, they want to be involved. The document itself was drafted for the 300 Committee by the Cape Cod Compact of Conservation Trusts. So, I think this is a particularly good thing to be involved in, and we appreciate your support for it. Because of the requirements of the tax credit program, which required that from the date they approved it, we had sixty days to complete the process, so we've got enough time to do that. We need to get it recorded before the end of the month. I think a restriction is available, but that is, an extension is available if needed, but we'd like to avoid having it requested. So, my hope is that the board can sign the conservation restriction that I've submitted, signed by Dr. and Mrs. Pildes. You can sign that tonight. The 300 Committee, President Treacher, are prepared to sign it tomorrow, and we'll get it up to the state for the final signatures before recording. Of course, I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Doug, you have a question?
I have two. One of them is fairly minor. In the map, the area for Lot D, I'm not sure I understand that cross, is that initially, is that a part of the Pildes's property, that they are not restricting but giving to that other property? Or I'm not sure it's even important that we know what that is, but I'm curious.
The triangular piece, you know, up in the left corner?
Sure, there are actually, the Pildes's, at one time, owned four lots, Lot A, B, C, and D. And their house is on Lot A, and the Prappis's house is on Lot D. There's a triangular area along Metoxit Road that you can see a driveway passes through. That's part of the Pildes's property, Lot C, but the, it really looks like it's the front yard of the Prappis family, and they have a driveway easement across it. The 300 Committee did not want to have the conservation restriction be on that piece of property because it really isn't appropriate for conservation and for preservation. And that's the other reason why the strip of property to the south side of the conservation restriction, which is shaded dark, it's a portion of Lot B, but it also is not in the conservation restriction because part of the Pildes's driveway and a pole line and a little bit of a septic system are in that area. So, the 2.15 acre that is shaded on the plan that I've given you is entirely free of any of that kind of disturbance and easier for the 300 Committee, therefore, to assure remains perpetually in a natural condition. But the effect of putting the conservation restriction on all but those little pieces of those two lots means that those two lots become undevelopable.
And just in memory of Mr. Murphy, do we have any idea what the tax ramifications are, losing those buildable lots?
Sure. Presently, and I didn't check the exact figures, I think that the two lots together probably have a value of $500,000 to $600,000. After the conservation restriction is put in place, the valuation will probably be only about a fifth of that, and so there will be some loss. Waiting for this hearing to begin, I Googled the statute, and it says that in determining whether the restriction is in a public interest, the government body, that's you, approving shall take into consideration and enlists a variety of conservation purposes. It does not include the tax implications of it. Of course, there is some tax implication, but we always used to think that for every house that gets built in Falmouth, that the costs of government exceed the, you know, the tax benefit from that. And for a piece of property that is in all of these environmentally sensitive areas that's received the kind of, sort of, stamp of approval for a conservation restriction that this one has, and I know that you not, you don't think otherwise, but yes, the town gives up some tax revenue, whether in the long run, the town is better off with these kinds of conservation restrictions and it's, you know, and other value becomes more, other properties become more valuable. That's another issue, but it isn't a reason that tax loss to turn down conservation restrictions that are worthy of your support.
It might help to know that our recent EQV, equalized valuation, is now $11 billion, so you know. Anybody else have any question? This is an incredible piece of property, really. And, I mean, in terms of its location, but it just, its value to keep in a restriction as open space, I think is really important to the town.
Well, I'd like to publicly thank the 300 Committee and the Compact of Conservation Trusts because, you know, they've really given a lot of value to the Pildes's in their participation in this. And the 300 Committee, for better or for worse, has become very selective in the projects that they can take on because they're concerned about the inspection, the monitoring, and so on. And so, when they do accept a conservation restriction, it means they think it's important. They can speak for themselves, but that's certainly my impression, and we all know they provide an invaluable service.
Any comments or questions for Mr. Ahmet?
I think that when I was first thinking and reading about this was the fact that is there any way that people would start a path? This happens many times with conservation land that is protected. And so, as I was looking at any streets or anything, that it harms the land they shouldn't be walking on. And I'm just trying to figure this out from the map, that there isn't any way, people are going to walk in there and create paths and everything else that comes with that.
Well, keep in mind that this is a conservation restriction on property that the Pildes's will continue to own. Now, the 300 Committee will have important rights, including the right to come onto the property to inspect it. We quite purposely put into the conservation restriction the right to create narrow walking paths, subject to the approval of the 300 Committee. So, they can create a path. There was historically a path, I'm not even sure it's can be traversed now, that actually went around the wetlands and out to the river. There's a possibility that in the future, this property might be given to the 300 Committee or to another appropriate body. But I think that, and therefore, the reservation of that right, I think is important to anticipate the possibility that there should be possibility of a path. And in thinking about that also, the conservation restriction allows a gravel parking area along the street for not more than four cars. But again, it doesn't exist now. It would only exist with the approval of the 300 Committee. But if you don't think ahead about how a piece of property might be used, people might want to use it in the future, if you don't put it in the conservation restriction now, it's very difficult to change it later, to do something that the public might want to do.
I agree with that. Okay, thank you.
Is there a motion?
I approve of the conservation restriction.
I second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye opposed? None opposed, unanimous?
Well, thank you very much. Now, somewhere, I think you probably have on your table the two copies that are actually signed.
Yes. We'll sign them right now.
And I would even, unless somebody else here can do it, I'd be happy to have one of you tell me that you've signed it freely and voluntarily, and I would authorize your signature.
Closer to the end of the meeting, we do that.
Okay. There you go.
So, he's making us do this.
We'll just take a minute to do that, since it's only two pages. So, you're next, Gary. And just a minute, as soon as we get this document signed.
Okay. This is my pre-act.
Do you want me to make a few comments leading in?
Onto this? Yeah. Yeah, well, she's signing the last one. This is a vote to authorize the closing of the property. This is a very momentous evening, Ms. Saganic. At 761 T-Ticket Highway, so the town manager is going to give us an update on why this is here tonight.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First, I just want to point out for the board, of course, in your packet of materials is a letter from Annie Saganic, who's with us here this evening, thank you, to me regarding the, this matter being on the agenda. And pursuant to the proposed closing of this property, I ask for a memorandum from Town Planner Brian Curry summarizing the project for members of the board that might not be as familiar with it, and we're welcome Annie Saganic's comments as well and description. But I do want to point out in Brian's letter, which you have, that he confirms that all of the conditions placed upon this property have been complied with. And in regard to that, we certainly have a firm recommendation, subject to the board's concurrence, that we allow this property to move forward, recognizing that the conditions have been satisfied and everything is in appropriate compliance. So, I did want to affirm that, Madam Chair, members of the board, and I would defer to Ms. Saganic for her comments as well.
Thank you, Julian. I'm Annie Saganic. I am the executive director for the Falmouth Housing Trust, and I brought my income table here so that everybody knows the demographic we're talking about, because the second that I don't bring it, people always say, "Well, what, how much money is that?" So, I just bring it all the time now. The house is, I don't know what you have in your binder, but I'll try to be succinct. The property is a one-acre, one-acre level lot that is municipally owned. It was taken through a tax-taking in the late seventies, early eighties by the time it made it through land court. It's been sitting there, it's on the corner of St. Mark's Road and T-Ticket Highway, 761 T-Ticket Highway. Just to give you sort of an idea of where that is along that route, it's kind of diagonally across from the Falmouth Lumber showroom. They have like a kitchen and bath showroom, so that's really probably the best landmark. It's flat, it's level, it is densely covered with brush and prickers, nothing fabulous. There's some lilies, which my volunteers and I are going to take and save for the future plantings. But there's really no vegetation of value. The project calls for one curb cut off of St. Mark's equidistant, it, the road does make sort of a. It, the road does make sort of a significant curve at the end, and that is a rare access point for home, not home port, Falmouth Port. So there is some traffic there. So the DPW and the neighbors, actually, there were several community meetings and we got input from the neighborhood, one curb cut. So it's a shared common driveway through an easement, we're not gonna have a homeowners' association. We are targeting the low to moderate income family. It's primarily for families. Three homes subdivided on roughly a third of an acre each, with their own distinct property lines and room for, you know, what people have, you know, obviously driveway, but, and a lamp post, but we hope that there'll be families here, so little people can have toys and things like that. We are gonna build a natural berm, if you will, on either side of the entrance to the lot, to help screen with the neighbors. And the houses are all three-bedroom, two-bath, two capes, which you see here. And then there's one ranch, which is gonna be visitable. I'll repeat what that is, because not everybody knows what it is. It's really an architectural term. It refers to accessibility, and it's, it's really the standard recommended plan now for pretty much all housing, but definitely affordable housing. It's achieved through one zero-step clearance into the, into the house or unit, apartment. The doors are 32 inches wide, so that a wheelchair could fit through. And then there's one first-floor bathroom that's negotiable with someone who's in a wheelchair. So that's visitable. And frankly, all it really does is it allows a unit to be more easily adapted in the, in the case that there is someone who's, who's got, you know, serious physical disabilities and needs things. So we hope to, we're dying to close and get moving. My project team is, is really quite great. Mike Duffany, who was here earlier, and this is Cubes Kine outfit, so cute, he's our clerk of the works. And Christian Valley is our contractor. Sorry, I had a little brain freeze. Bill Roslansky is our architect, and we did recycle plans from previous housing development that the trust did prior to my tenure. We, of course, updated them for code compliance, but that was one of the cost-saving measures that we, we used. Dan Celine did the landscape plan gratis, which is lovely. And Tim Santos from Homes McGrath was our engineer, and again, Homes McGrath, I've been working on this project, you've all heard me. But you haven't, Mr. Patterson and Sue Moran, for five years, for three units. Anyway, Laura Moynihan will handle the closing and the, and the recording of the titles. The units will be deed restricted in perpetuity, and the housing trust does monitor annually and reports to the town. The Department of Housing and Community Development, which is sort of the state entity that monitors 40Bs and affordable units on our subsidized housing inventory, which you'll hear SHI over and over, that's what that means. And one of the elements, or one of the parts of the, excuse me, project that's sort of neat, and it's not really in my, in my direct jurisdiction, but I do have a Cape Cod RTA bus stop, saved for me, right here. It's on the corner of the lot, so it's actually not on my future homeowner's property, it's in the state highway layout, which is how it has to be. But the Cape Cod RTA and our friends up in Boston, actually, there's an office in Kingswater or someplace, the Department of Transportation is gonna work with the town to have a, have a bus stop there, so that all the, the folks who are living down St. Mark's Road, my people could use the bus, the local school kids will be able to use the bus, and of course, it's covered and it's, it's lit, so that's nice. And the best thing is they're paying for it, and they maintain it, so we don't have to. I think that's, if the design components and the architecture, Cape Cod shingle construction, one and a half stories tall, so it really fits in with the property around it. We've already gone through all our permitting, we have our comprehensive permit, it's on file, we have our LIP application approved with DHCD, and we have our construction loan, which has also been signed off on. So it's really, these are just a few formalities, and then we're ready to roll.
Well done, Eddie.
I think she's probably right, that maybe we have heard this, and it's really good for you to say after five years, we have three projects, so I immediately thought, well, what's next then?
Yeah, what's next? I've got some things up my sleeve. I'm earmarking some municipal buildings, so watch out.
So does anybody have any further questions on Ms. Saganic? If not, I'll look for a motion to approve.
I move, I move approval. Second?
Great. Is there any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, none opposed? Unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you, very much. Great addition.
Next week, I'll be back.
Okay. Our next item is a request for a change of Sunday hours to allow Leah Maguires to serve liquor at 10:00 a.m. You might know that just a couple of years ago, the ABCC, the, the limit on Sunday, you couldn't serve until noon, but they changed it, now that you're allowed to issue licenses for 10:00 a.m. Ms. Maguire, for sitting here all evening, listening to all this interesting information.
I'm sure. I'm Deborah Maguire, Leah Maguire's Irish pub. Welcome to Town Hall. Great to see both of you, Dan. We would like to extend our liquor license on Sunday to start brunch, so that we may garner more meals tax for the town of Falmouth.
Very noble purpose, I like that.
Anyway, it's just a market that we're looking to capture, we're going to do something called Sunday Fun Days, and just brunch items, people sometimes like a Bloody Mary or a Mimosa.
I would have approval.
And we would like to be able to offer that too.
Right.
With your approval.
Is there any discussion? Any questions? Yes?
What time do you open the rest of the days of the week?
11:30.
Okay, you didn't want to make a change on that one.
No.
You just want Sunday.
Okay, no. We just want, want to include Sunday brunch. Our kitchen crew is like, please don't make us a minute only one day.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, none opposed? Unanimous. Thank you.
Starting when?
Starting this Sunday?
Starting this Sunday.
Awesome. And the, the next item on our agenda is a sign variance, and this is for Arts Alive. The Design Review Committee reviewed this, and they, we've, they've always put the banners up. And so the dates requested are Sunday the 15th, June 15th to June 22nd, and September 27th to October 6th. The other thing the Design Review Committee said is that they also approved the need to not review this each year, that there are no changes made in the banner itself or the periods that they are used, and they would like to request that amendment be made to the bylaw code, so that they don't have to come back every year. And we can't do that tonight, we can't amend the bylaw tonight, but we might want to refer it to, for a change, so that, there are not that many, I think, that put the banners up. The veterans put them up at Christmas time. So I think it's kind of, those are the dates, 15th to the 22nd of June, the 27th to the 6th of October, which is what they do every year.
I move approval of the sign variance for Arts Falmouth.
Second? Any discussion?
Just a question, who has the authority to change the bylaw?
Um...
Does it have to be a town meeting article?
Yeah, yeah, we would have to vote it first, and then it would go to a town meeting, but I don't see why we couldn't do that.
So that would be something we'd do in September?
You could take that up at the November town meeting.
At the November town meeting.
If the board would care to.
Yeah. Becky?
Concerning the flags on Main Street, what they were asking for, and that has been reduced in time, there was also a request for a waiver of event fee.
Of a what?
Event fee.
Oh, I didn't notice that.
It's on the third page.
But that's not on our agenda, though. We're only dealing with the sign variance, not of a waiver of the fee. That's a totally different procedure. They would have to come and actually make a request to the waiver of the fee. Or maybe that was already done, do you remember? But that's not on tonight, so we couldn't do that tonight anyway, because we're only, we're only...
Okay, it just didn't need to be in our material then.
Let's see, well, let me find out where that is, because we got, we have the whole...
Go to the fourth page.
It was included in there.
Oh, it was included in their original request?
Right, they tucked it on the backside of it.
Oh. Well, somehow...
But there's a different process to go through for that.
Yeah, we have to go through a totally different process to waive the fee.
All right. So we're only gonna discuss the, the flags?
Well, we just voted it.
I don't think we can.
Oh, I was looking at the waiver fee.
Oh, I'm sorry. No, we just voted the, the banners, yeah.
No, that's what the motion is, we haven't voted yet.
Oh, I'm sorry. We have a, I'm moving ahead too fast. We have a motion and a second to approve the hanging of the banners for those dates.
Right.
All right, now, so now we could call for the vote. All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed? Unanimous. Right, I like it. Well, this one's already done. Now, we have another sign variance for C-Education Association, which's whole. And what they are looking for is, they have an existing sign, and they want to add underneath that sign, another free, another sign that says SEA Semester, because that's actually the program that they run. So they want people, when they go by there, to know that this is, that's the name of their program, SEA Semester, and they want to be able to hang that there, and that's the variance that they're requesting.
And this is actually for two signs, right?
Yes.
They have two signs on the property, they want to put this on both of them.
Right, exactly.
I move approval of the sign waiver, the sign variance.
Second? Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed? No one opposed, the motion carries unanimously. And now we're going to just spend a few minutes discussing our strategic plan retreat. Did you want to take that up, Julian?
Certainly. Happy to, Madam Chair. The board will recall that particularly the continuing members of the board, Selectman Moran and Patterson would not be as familiar with it, but traditionally, the board has considered a strategic plan retreat approximately in the month of September, and more recently, there was a suggestion that the board might wish to consider having that retreat a month or two early, earlier than September, and allowing for the information to be disseminated earlier in the year. And particularly with two new members of the board, there might be some timeliness to that as well. The original suggestion was Saturday, June 14th. The reason Saturday was suggested was, again, traditionally, it had been held as part of a retreat, a morning retreat by the board to determine the updated strategic plan, and we've used a facilitator at that time for the plan. I did contact the facilitator who we've used for several years, who unfortunately is not available on Saturdays in the summertime, and who respectfully made an alternate suggestion that I just bring to the board, and that is that perhaps you might consider a weeknight, if, if you would want to have that in the summertime, particularly the month of June, for say, two to three hours. Again, we found that essentially three hours pretty well has allowed the board in, in recent years to cover the full range of issues, get a lively discussion, and establish a new strategic plan. So that was the suggestion that has, I bring forward. Saturday the 14th turns out to be a conflict for more than one member of the board, but also for the facilitator, if the board would care to use the same individual as in the past. So we could look at weeknight dates in June, if the board would like to do so, or any other alternative certainly would be on the table as well, Madam Chair.
Right now, we have me scheduled for Monday the 9th and the 23rd.
Correct.
And potentially the 30th, but we haven't...
Right, with, with the five Mondays in June, you do have the potential for a fifth Monday evening meeting, and if I wouldn't be out of order, if I, if I might also mention, Madam Chair and Selectman Jones, that we have, of course, received a request from the planning board for consideration of a joint meeting potentially on June 23rd. And of course, as, as a matter of another piece of business, and again, it may be timely, given that we're talking about June schedules, that would be a joint meeting with the school committee to determine the successor to Selectman Patterson for his remaining unexpired term. Similar to the process the board followed a year ago, when Selectman Moffett was elected to the board. So that is another matter that you might want to consider taking up, which would involve a joint meeting. The last item, if I could stay on that one instant, Diane Davidson in our office will be advertising in Friday's newspaper the availability of a school committee position for Selectman Patterson's unexpired term, and we're double-checking to, but we believe that needs to give two weeks of minimum time for respondents, which would mean you could still act upon it on the 23rd, but you might want to prefer to take that up in a joint meeting on the 30th. So I apologize for being so long-winded, but those are sort of three dueling challenges for the board's time, yet in the month of June potentially. And as you noted, you do meet again a week from tonight, and then on the 23rd, those have been tentatively scheduled.
Is it the 2nd, the 9th, and the 23rd?
Correct.
The 2nd, the 9th, and the...
23rd.
And the 23rd are the three dates the board would have.
Are the three dates?
A regular business meeting at this point.
And on the 9th, it is executive session at 6?
Yes, tentatively, we have discussed, yes, that's what we anticipate, yes.
Okay, all right.
And then the 23rd then could be the joint meeting with the planning board, as well as the school committee.
It could be.
It could be on those dates.
For instance, perhaps the board might like to convene early on the 23rd as well, conceivably to meet with the planning board, and you could follow that with a meeting with the school committee during your more regularly scheduled time, maybe 7:00, 7:30, that's, that's one option you could conceivably consider.
So then, so when would we have our meeting with our facilitator?
The 16th.
I don't want to during the week.
During the week? I don't, my phone just died, so I have no idea what...
Monday. That's the Monday, we're not meeting.
Okay, that's the off Monday, if you'd want to meet that evening.
Oh, that's like...
Well, the 16th and the 23rd are off.
No, just the 16th is off for you at the moment. I would need to double-check with the facilitator, be happy, I can do that first thing in the morning.
Should we give you an alternate?
Yeah, it might be good if we had a couple alternate dates.
Yeah, it doesn't have to be a Monday, could it be a different night?
Certainly, yeah.
Thursday nights. Well, after the 19th, Thursdays open, like the 26th for me, but prior to that, I'm committed...
The 26th, which is a Thursday?
Yeah, that's a Thursday, so that's okay for me, but they're...
Can anybody else make that?
I could do it, I mean, 16, 17, 18, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, I could do any of them.
No?
No, the 19th and the 26th, I couldn't.
You cannot do the 26th.
That's right.
Okay.
How about 11, 12, or 13?
What about the 16th? Can we go back to that, the Monday?
No, that's our first...
I would raise that as a...
Oh, you're not going for a holiday.
We're looking for a couple other options if we...
Well, 11, 12, or 13 are okay.
11, 12, or 13?
Mm-huh.
That's Tuesday through Thursday next week.
Wednesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday.
Yeah, but Thursday doesn't work for me.
And Friday, I'm sure if he can't do Saturday morning, he's not gonna come to a Friday night.
So the 11th would be the alternate.
The 11th is the one.
That's a Tuesday?
That's a Wednesday.
That's a Wednesday.
That's nine days from now, I just...
Yeah, it might be a little tight, but we'll be happy to check on that.
Okay, then the 18th?
I guess my preference would be 16th would be my first choice, 18th would be my second, and the 11th would be Thursday.
What time are you talking about, on the Wednesday? I need to be done it, too.
Well, whatever the board would prefer, the thought would be late afternoon, late afternoon to...
Like 4 o'clock or something?
Potentially 4, 5 o'clock, whatever you might be.
For all of these dates we're discussing, we're using that time.
Late afternoon was the thought.
Okay.
And I'm sorry, Selectman Moran?
Oh, the 18th is out then.
The 18th is out, okay. Right now, we have the 6th, Monday the 16th, and Wednesday the 11th, as, and that, that late afternoon might work for all. I would say 5 to 8, 4 to 7.
I would also give Jeff the flexibility that if 6 to 9 worked, 4 to 7...
Excellent, if that's agreeable, okay.
You know, any of those times.
Anywhere between 4 and 9?
Yeah.
And that's the 16th? Anywhere between 4:00 and 9:00. And that's the 16th or the 11th. Are those the two dates now we're looking at?
Is there a later date in the unlikely event he couldn't make either of those two earlier ones? I know, Selectman Moffett, you mentioned the, through the 26th is problematic.
Yes.
Is, is the 26th a Thursday?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay.
You're looking at 4th of July.
Okay, yeah.
All right, do you want to stay on our regular routine and just go to another Monday on the 23rd?
What about, do we have anything committed for the 30th?
That's only, that's, you know, another possible Selectman meeting night, but it could certainly be for that purpose.
Or, you know, if we had a half-hour business we had to get done.
Perhaps with the School Committee, for instance, if you needed to reserve that date.
That's not a bad choice also to.
How about the 30th, Becky? Is that?
That's good for me.
That's okay for you?
Third fallback.
That would, that would be better for me than the other dates.
Better than the other two?
Yeah, the 16th with the backup of 30.
I think that if we think of Mondays as our regular day, and then when we don't have them, I think we could put in this extra meetings and stay with that Monday idea.
Okay.
Okay, so let's try for the 30th then.
Yeah, the 30th.
So that would be our preferred, our primary.
Oh, okay.
And like, or secondary. The 16th would be first choice, and 30th, is that what we're saying, or?
I like the 16th first and the 30th as our backup.
Agreed.
Oh, the 16th, Monday, the 16th prefer, is, is first choice.
Those are your two Monday dates.
And the 30th is the second choice.
Okay.
And then the 11th would just be the third.
Third, right, good.
Okay.
And looking at the agenda items, I wouldn't be surprised if, apart from this, we're going to have to meet either the 16th or the 30th.
Anyway.
Anyway, so just to be aware that there are nothing's with other interviews and appointments we're going to have to do.
Well, that's good. I can't tell you what I'm doing, because my battery died. Sorry about that.
The only other thought, if I might interject, the Board at this point is tentatively not scheduled to meet in July until the 14th.
Right.
Because of the way the calendar works. So, and I only bring it up from the standpoint of a joint appointment with the School Committee. It would be a fairly long wait if you, if you don't act in the month of June. So you might just keep in mind.
Plenty of options here. We could do it in any one of those nights.
Well, you have to give two weeks to advertise, which means that you won't have, the earliest you could do it might be the 23rd. And so you're probably talking the 23rd, which is iffy, or the 30th. So I just bring it up to mention that maybe you could even have, find out what we're in a short.
But we have a meeting on the 23rd anyway.
Right.
So we could do it on the 23rd before we meet with the Planning Board.
Acceptive and tolerant.
As long as you've had enough time to get your applications and review them.
We're talking about the School Committee meeting appointment.
Just the School Committee.
On the 23rd, well, that's, the question is, can they get it, can all these applications come in, get reviewed, and be given to us in time?
You will have had very little time to look at what's come in, in all likelihood, on the 23rd.
So maybe we should do it on the 30th then.
That's the only reason I, giving everybody two weeks, I mean.
Yeah. And I do think we could tie it, we could have it on the retreat night. If the 30th ends up being the retreat night, we could also.
We still do it first, yeah.
Right, we could still do this as part of it, depending on what time, if it's.
So maybe the 30th.
Possibly, maybe you could look, I don't know if the School Committee could meet early, like 5:00 to 6:00, and then you go into your retreat, 6:00 to 9:00.
Or if we did a retreat, 4:00 to 7:00, they come in.
Okay, or even earlier, yeah.
Yeah, if we did that, yeah.
True. Check on times and report back to the Board.
Okay, good.
Uh-oh.
The only comment I would make is that one of the real benefits of the retreat is that it generally is an off-premise item, that it's a time for you to collaborate.
We don't want to have it, we don't have it here.
Talk in a little bit more casual way than you normally would, to get to know each other, for all of us to get to know each other a little bit. So as much as we can create that type of an atmosphere, maybe meeting offsite and then returning to Town Hall.
Right, yeah.
So you have that in the earlier hour, you could have little, you know, sandwiches. It just, it just creates an environment where you're a little bit more collegial and less formal.
So I think the.
I didn't realize we were putting retreat in here also. I was doing the Planning Board, I was doing School Committee, and I was doing strategic. I had input retreat.
No, that's the same thing, strategic retreat.
It's the same.
Okay.
Yeah, strategic retreat, same.
Same thing.
Same thing.
Yeah, we just, yeah. We followed retreat in the past, you're quite correct.
But that's true. We should try not to schedule anything that night, so we can go offsite.
One name would be sufficient for me.
That's a good point.
Yeah.
Yep.
All right.
Let's hope for the 16th.
We will shoot for the 16th for strategic plan.
Well, you do say retreat on the top of this page. Strategic Plan Retreat.
Yeah.
Note to a meeting.
Okay. Selectman's reports. Does anyone have anything they'd like to report on?
It was a great Memorial Day parade, I can tell you. I certainly enjoyed it.
Yeah, it was, wasn't it?
And a very nice ceremony.
It was, very much so.
Oh, yes, I know, I've been some point. I went to the bank opening this morning. I turned a ribbon, ribbon cutting, and there were quite a few people there.
Which bank?
At the Marcus Vineyard.
Oh, yes, the Marcus Vineyard Bank.
And the former Rav and Jones. And, and it was really, it was run by the Chamber of Commerce. So.
Oh, good.
A lot of different conversation. I just did that this morning. I don't think I'd remember it now.
Well, I, I went to the Military Task Force meeting at the base, it wasn't at the base, it was at the Upper Cave Technical School. But it was, it was the, it was, this is a new committee that was formed by the Governor, and it's all part of the, a big plan to, to find ways for the, the base, our base, Joint Base Cape Cod, to be more, to be a partner with the surrounding communities, to have a collaborative relationship. They started this some time back, but now it's very formalized. And our State Representative, Dave Vera, is a member of this task force. And so they, they, all the colonels, there were several colonels, whether it was Coast Guard, the Army, the Air Force, and the National Guard, were there. There was no one there from the Marines, although they do have a unit there at the base. But the whole idea now is this, the Homeland Security. Every single base in the country is looking for a way to create a mission, or to add to their current mission, so that it's meaningful and that they won't be closed on by the federal government. That's the big thing. Now, here at Cape Cod, they do have to reduce some of their activities because of the costs of using the base. So they, they're, they're looking at it, and they're looking at the collaborations and what they can do community-wide to provide support to the towns in some way, whether it be like they have a wastewater treatment plan up there, that maybe somebody might possibly be interested in joining with them. And they're looking for ways to save money, but they're also looking for ways, as I said, to increase their mission. And the Joint Base Cape Cod, you know, they have an airport there, the, the air guard. And it is the only Homeland Security base in the country designated as Homeland Security, which is pretty interesting. And because they are Homeland Security, they, they can do a lot of other things, I guess, that other bases don't do. They also have this drone program that they're working on, and that was very, very, that was fascinating to hear all the things about that. I, I wish I, you know, military terms are amazing, and it's hard sometimes to remember what they are. But the one is that when you want the drone to come down, and these don't fly very high, you know, they're in now protected airspace, but they don't fly very high. But when you want them to, to come down, they don't just come down like an airplane, you know, you have to take them down. So what happens is you shut off remotely the power to the drone, and then it just falls flat to the earth. So what they're trying to do is to make them in such a way, and I can't remember the term, where they're sufficiently.
Energized.
Made, so that they can withstand something like that. When they come to, they don't just break apart, and that's the end of it. So there's all kinds of interesting things they're doing. And so they, they want to know how they can help each town. So we're going to have to have a conversation at some point and see how we might be able to, to utilize services that the base has. And then they use services that we can provide as well, so.
Julian, do you remember what time the North Town School event is on Thursday?
Oh, it's at 2:00.
2:00.
North Falmouth?
Yeah.
Because I know there's also the light meeting at 2:00, and I'm hoping someone can make it, too.
What's it, what else is it, too?
There's a LED light meeting.
Oh, LED.
Yes, yes, lights.
Try to get somebody to North Falmouth School.
Sure, we'll find, yeah, we'll find a way to.
All right. Any other reports? All right. Julian, Town Manager's report?
Thank you, Madam Chair. A couple items. As was noted, it was indeed a great pleasure to, to participate in the town's annual Memorial Day Ceremony on May 26th. It was certainly well-attended and very uplifting, and Mother Nature reminded us of who's in charge, with some much-needed spring rain. But it did not dampen any spirits or the ceremony, which was, you know, really exhilarating. So also, the, just as an update, the first weekly appearance of the farmer's market on Thursday, May 22nd, at Peg Noonan Park, went forward reasonably well. My understanding from Rocky Gomes is that he did not observe any damage to the still-growing new turf and landscaping at Peg Noonan, which we've mentioned and talked about here. I do want to continue to thank Rocky and his colleagues for their great work there. It's still, we're getting very close, but still a work in progress on a few of the landscaping touches. And as the Board may have noted, the performing stage is essentially completed. There's a little bit of tweaking and fine-tuning there. And Sheriff's Ward Crews assisted with the basics, but Rocky's, Rocky and his colleagues wrapped up all the finishing touches there. So we're really excited about that enhancement to the park and that replacement. I also wanted to thank the Board for the opportunity to attend the recent Massachusetts Municipal Managers Spring 2014 Annual Conference. Very much appreciated. It included an important and continuing education opportunity, which is, of course, a great assistance to both Heather and I maintaining our professional manager credentials. And I do want to echo some comments earlier, and congratulations to Selectman Moran and Selectman Patterson in their recent election to this Board. And as Town Manager, I look forward to working with you both with great anticipation. That concludes my report. Thank you.
There's nothing else? A motion to adjourn.
So move?
Second?
All in favor say aye.
All right.
Aye. Meeting is.